Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, June 30th, 2025. Thank you to everyone who is joining us here in council chambers, everybody watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any coverings, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks for being here this evening. Our last meeting of the first half of 2025. It's hard to believe we're halfway through the year already. First order of business tonight is to approve our agenda. And into our agenda this evening, under item two, our introductory business, we have item 2.1, which is the appointment of a new council secretary. Our consent business is 16 items long. Councilmember Muah has her consent agenda tonight. Under item four, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we have four public hearings scheduled tonight. Item 4.1 will be a public hearing regarding the vacation of public drainage, utility, sidewalk, and bike easements. Item 4.2 is a public hearing about our sign code lookback. That's our ordinance. We've done this a couple of times, so this is officially part two. Item 4.3 is another public hearing regarding a privately initiated city code amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district. And the final public hearing is regarding the SAC fee ordinance. It's an update related to ICC charges. Under item five, our organizational business, five items there as well. We've got a 5.1, a discussion on our prevailing wage ordinance. Item 5.2, a discussion regarding the pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements at West 84th Street and Normandale Boulevard. Item 5.3 is a discussion on the city council involvement on boards and commissions. We will do item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update, which is what we typically end with, and we will end the public portion of the meeting with that, because then item 5.5 is a closed session regarding property acquisition for the salt storage building. What we'll do after 5.4, we'll clear the council chambers, we'll go into closed session, and then we'll come back into adjourn. Council, that is our agenda for this evening. Are there any questions, corrections, or additions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion in a second by councilmember Muah to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero and the opportunity to mention that councilmember Lohman is not with us this evening and not feeling well tonight. We will move on to our introductory items. Item 2.1 is council secretary appointment. I will turn this over to our assistant city manager, Elizabeth Tolsmann.
Mayor and councilmembers, I am pleased to introduce our new council secretary and executive assistant to the mayor and city council, Ms. Priyanka Rai. Ms. Rai comes to us with extensive administrative experience. She previously worked for the city of Shoreview as a deputy city clerk, where she helped prepare the, provided administrative assistance to the city manager, assistant city managers, and city council. She prepared council packets in minutes and also maintained city records such as resolutions, ordinances, city code, and public hearing notices. And she also processed liquor, tobacco, cannabis, gambling, massage, and peddler permits as well for the city of Shoreview. Prior to that, she worked for the Mansville Public School District, where she assisted students and families into enrolling into the school district and just answering any questions from families as well. I want to read one quote as part of her application material that I thought really stood out for her. She says, "I wish to serve and be part of the vibrant community of Bloomington, most importantly within the city of Bloomington's mission of cultivating an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. As the executive assistant, I'd be committed to fostering positive relations and accountability through my work, along with a focus on giving back to and strengthening the community we serve. It should also be noticed that outside of work, she enjoys reading, gardening, painting, and doing crossword puzzles with her family. She also enjoys biking, hiking, and watching a good movie as well."
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the city of Bloomington. I am so excited to be in this role and looking forward to working with you all and the residents of the community and doing great things together.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for joining us here at Bloomington. We're thrilled to have you here on staff and ready to see you jump right in with both feet and excited that you're here from Shoreview. I mean, let's be honest, we're just excited that you're here instead of Shoreview. So, thank you so very much. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Council, that just wasn't ceremonial. We do have a motion that the council secretary appointment is an official city council appointment. And so I would look for a motion to appoint Priyanka Rai as secretary to the city council effective June 30th, 2025, and Denise Christensen, special projects coordinator, as the acting secretary when the secretary is absent.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Dalisandro, second by councilmember Muah to make the appointment as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Welcome aboard. Thank you much for being here with us tonight. Item three is our consent business. Councilmember Muah has the consent agenda. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't heard of any holds from anybody. Last call, anybody? Hearing none, then I would move consent items 3.1 through 3.16 as written in the agenda.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Carter to accept tonight's consent agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly.
Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to hold this, but on a couple of the things that are on the agenda, there are some adjustments upward to some of the contracts, the subcontracts that we have in our, for some of our projects that are underway. My question would be, and not necessarily for an answer anytime soon, but like, just I'd be curious to know if that's a function of us getting the macro level deal done before we know the details of the micro level stuff and how those things happen, because all of them seem to have been underneath the actual total budget, so there was no budget variance of any kind. But there were changes that were being made to those allocations, and I'd love to understand just that a little bit more if we could, maybe we could get better at that. I don't know. Maybe it's a normal part of business, but to help us understand how that happens, and that can be taken offline, but I did want to make note of that.
Thank you for the comment, and staff, I'm sure heard, and we'll get an answer to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions regarding the consent agenda tonight? We do have a motion in a second on the table to accept tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We will move into our public hearings this evening. First public hearing is item 4.1. It's a public hearing regarding the vacation of public drainage, utility, sidewalk, and bikeway easements over and across lots 1, 2, 3, Block 1, Team LA, and Lot 1, Block 1, Go For Outlook, Hennepin County, Minnesota. Julie Long, our city engineer, is here to explain to me what Team LA means.
Mr. Mayor, that's just the name of the plat, so as long as you do not name your plat something offensive, Hennepin County will accept it. Even if you name it, Go For Outlook, you know, if you're a Wisconsin fan.
Learn something new. Very good. Thank you.
This one's fairly straightforward. Counsel, you approved the replating of these lots back in May, so this is just vacating the existing easements so that it's ready for replating, and then the new easements will be either encumbered by the new plat or by a document that's filed after. Fairly straightforward.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Long, on this one? No questions? All right. This is a public hearing, and I will open tonight's public hearing on item 4.1. As I said, this is regarding an ordinance for vacation of public drainage, utility, sidewalk, and bikeway easements over and across lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1, Team LA, and Lot 1, Block 1, Go For Outlook. Is there anyone in this council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Ms. Rai, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
No one on the phone. Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Counsel, no one in the council chambers coming forward, no one on the phone looking to speak to item 4.1. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Rivas to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. So, counsel, unless there are questions, any concerns, anything anyone wants to discuss regarding item 4.1? If not, I would look for action. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to do that. I'd move to adopt an ordinance approving the vacation of public drainage, utility, sidewalk, and bikeway easements over and across lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 1, Team LA, and Lot 1, Block 1, Go For Outlook, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Motion by councilmember Muah, second by councilmember Dalisandro to accept the ordinance outlined in item 4.1 as described by councilmember Muah. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. We will move on to item 4.2, our second public hearing of the evening. This is regarding a sign code lookback ordinance, part two. Mr. Johnson, our planning manager, will lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. Johnson, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor members. Thank you. Signs again.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's the first time Mr. Johnson's been before us before 8:00 of the evening. Celebration in and of itself.
No, thank you for that. Yeah, there's, so thank you for the opportunity to present this last lookback at the sign code as recently adopted in February, not the last one ever, but just as part of this discrete project. So I'll jump right into it. So there's two issues before you that when we reviewed this back in April, you requested be brought back before you to take one last look, and so I will present those to you right away here. So again, the sign code was adopted in February of 2024. We presented this project to you, the one-year lookback as a commitment to the public and business community who are interested in wondering how the sign code would perform. So we did that on April the 28th as part of that meeting request of these items come back. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this ordinance on June the 5th. I would note that they did recommend denial of the ordinance on a five-to-one vote, just to share that that perspective, I don't want to speak for the Planning Commission, but very much tracked with their discussions around electronic signs and other things as part of the previous sign code discussions. I would say that that is relatively consistent. So before you this evening, one additional public hearing. So the two issues before you in this ordinance have to do with building signs on our taller commercial buildings in Bloomington. Those that are seven stories or taller, so this is mostly office buildings and some hotels. Right now, there is a limitation on the number of building signs per building elevation that can be above the second story of the building. And the reason why there is separate regulations around that is that these are very visible, highly visible signs. They tend to be quite large. They tend to have a disproportionately higher visual impact on the community than signs on other buildings, just for the sheer distance that you can see them in many different areas. So as you can see, the ordinance before you, that language is highlighted there. This is the existing code. It says signs are limited to one building, one per building elevation. If you go to the next slide here, this is to show you what the proposed change would be, expanding the number of signs from one to three per building elevation. I'll talk about maybe the reason why to do that in a moment, but I just want to emphasize the square footage allowance does not change with this ordinance. So this is a sheer change to the number of signs allowed. So why expand signage on tall buildings? Most of the tall buildings in Bloomington do have a fairly similar footprint. They tend to be large rectangular buildings or square-shaped buildings, just from a footprint standpoint, kind of having very similar, consistent architectural elevations. However, there are a few tall buildings in Bloomington that are also subject to this regulation that present multiple faces that all face the same building elevation, where there could be some opportunities to add additional signage. Northland Center there on the left, Bell Plaza there on the right, these are two examples of buildings that are subject to this restriction where some additional signage higher up on the building likely would not be excessive from a visual clutter standpoint. Some of these elements that we'll talk about tonight certainly are subjective and according to the beholder, of course. But the example on the left was an actual real-world scenario where a property owner was interested in providing more signage for a tenant. Ultimately, they could not do that under the current provisions of the code, even though it appears like these are different faces of the building. The last thing I'll say about it is just, you know, and we'll get to this on the electronic sign side, too, there's always a balance between the aesthetics of regulation, trying to kind of protect the over-commercialization of the public realm. At the same time, commercial speech is important to help businesses be successful, advertise their products, their services, those kinds of things. It can be helpful from a real estate perspective as well. Every time I come up here, there's always something happening. So that's kind of gets to the why. Those are the things that you're balancing when looking at it. I would say as part of the study discussion, we also looked at potentially just two signs per elevation. Ultimately, what we're presenting to you in the ordinance is three per elevation. That could be back down to two, but it's really just a series of choices at that point. So electronic sign dwell time. Again, this has been a consistent discussion point back in the larger sign code discussion as well as was discussed. It was a, someone from the public Clear Channel Outdoor requested that the city look at this again as part of our lookback ordinance. It wasn't part of the original bulk items that staff recommended to look at, but they've been consistent in seeking this change. So what is dwell time for electronic signs? Dwell time is the minimum amount of time that the sign has to remain static on one message before it can transition to another message. That's the actual definition in our code. We'll see how this works. I haven't done this before at a city council meeting, but you can see on the slide before you, this is the electronic sign, obviously, out here outside of Civic Plaza. It looks much better from a distance. By the way, it's not broken or with that kind of pixelization. But that, in effect, is just to show you how often it changes a representation of eight seconds, because that sign does run at eight seconds currently. The reason that it's allowed to do that is because the way our ordinance is set up is that if you have smaller, more simple, with less text messages, you actually can run it at eight-second dwell time. What you can have is graphics, so pictures, as well as longer messages. And the reason for that is to just limit the complexity of the messages to try and minimize any potential for driver distraction. So that is what dwell time is. Why do cities regulate it? Why does Bloomington regulate it? There's two primary reasons. One is for traffic safety, again, just trying to manage driver distraction. I think the traffic safety community is relatively aligned and not being super big fans of electronic signs that are not MINDOT or public-oriented signs that are there for traffic safety. But again, just driver distraction is really the name of the game there. The other element which does fuel into restrictions around electronic signs is just trying to maintain a certain aesthetic of certain parts of the community. You can think of like downtown Main Streets that are old classic, for example, certainly would have different perspectives than, say, Times Square or more dynamic Nicollet Mall, for example, that utilize these technologies to create an intended aesthetic. So each community kind of has to define what aesthetic it's looking for in electronic signs. Do play a role in that. But these are the two main things. Just on the traffic safety side, I haven't, you know, there's been an extensive amount of research that's been done. It's hard to say with any certainty that the results of this research is scientifically conclusive. It does note that there is longer attention paid to electronic signs than static billboards, but the range of these results tend to be more in milliseconds, not full seconds. So it's not to say that there isn't some concerns there. I just say if you look at the bulk of the research, it hasn't landed on what is conclusively a safe electronic dwell time. What is certainly less safe is video, very low dwell times, just in the seconds. That can drive more driver distraction. And so the Federal Highway Administration has landed at eight seconds. That is true, based on some research done in the 2000s and updated throughout the 2010s somewhat. And I, but I do want to emphasize there are critics of this research that say that it could be done in different ways, or that it is not adequate, or they disagree. Like any academic community, there's a lot of different opinions on all sides of this. And so I think, that being said, these are really just the two components that I would have you consider, think about when kind of making this decision. What are the pros and cons of electronic signs? I talked about the cons, you know, over-commercialization, potentially an aesthetic that's not consistent with the community's desired look for its commercial areas, et cetera. What are the pros? The pros are the ability to disseminate more speech. Speech typically tends to be a good thing, commercial speech, non-commercial speech. Communities, society all needs different ways to communicate speech, and electronic signs have the ability to do so in a more dynamic or frequent way than static signs. That certainly is the case. And I would say that, you know, you've got a letter in your packet from Clear Channel Outdoor, but certainly we've dealt, we've dealt with other parties who are interested in looking at ways to increase or decrease regulation, rather, on the electronic signs, and that includes the city's park and rec department, because of course they operate electronic signs as well. So people always just think about commercial speech, think about speech that's also public-oriented speech or programming. I just want to try and paint a full picture if I can. So what would the changes do? So as I mentioned before, less complex signs currently have an eight-second dwell time, more complex signs, or those with pictures have a minimum dwell time of 20 seconds. I would note, I'm not aware of any traffic incidents or crashes that can be directly attributed to any of these changes since that happened in February 2020, or I'm sorry, February 2024. And the same, the same standards apply in our billboard section of our code. So this ordinance would change, would just simplify the dwell time to eight seconds for both, just general electronic signs, but also electronic billboards. So that's that proposed language before you there. How else are electronic signs regulated? I think this is kind of important just to set some of the context to an extent. We do have a maximum size of electronic signs. That's less relevant to billboards. Video is not allowed on these signs. Signs that are visible from the public right of way are not allowed to have video, and that certainly would be a much larger hazard or issue depending on where and the context. Setback from residential uses, we do require that these signs not be located right near residential properties, and that's to deal with some of the nuisance characteristics. Now, you could also argue there is some nuisance for other commercial properties, certainly, but the residential there is noted. Transition, transitions have to be instantaneous. You can't use effects or pixelization or kind of these interesting transitions to do that. There are brightness limitations on this as well. And then finally, for electronic signs that are outside of the buffer from residential uses but still within a certain proximity, they have to either be turned off in the evening or remain static, and that's again, just to address more nuisance issues. The other thing I'll just say about billboards now on the slide is just billboards are not allowed, new billboards in Bloomington. And so when we talk about the elements of this ordinance as it relates to electronic signs, there's four of them in Bloomington, three along 494, one on 35W. The code does not allow new billboards to be established. So in thinking about that type of decision, at least in the context of this ordinance, it's really just limited to those four when talking about billboards. As I said, we've been staying in touch with interested parties, some sign companies, but Clear Channel Outdoor has been the most consistent participant in our engagement efforts as we've used that interested party email list throughout. And then I mentioned that the Planning Commission did not support this proposal. They recommended that the city council not adopt this ordinance on a vote of five to one. And should the city council arrive at a different conclusion, I do have extra slides for an alternative motion, but I'm here to present the Planning Commission recommendation. So thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Johnson? We'll have time for discussion after the public hearing, but questions from Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dalisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Is there anything in the ordinance today about distance, these billboards' distance from intersections, or anything where drivers would have to make, you know, exiting, entering decisions, that kind of thing? Do we have any such location-based ordinance information in there today?
Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, no. We certainly do have some general provisions in the sign code that apply to all sign types that have to do with traffic hazard, and so I think there would be some tools in the toolbox. But again, I think in the past, the city, after prohibiting billboards generally and making the establishment of new ones not feasible beyond the four that were established before the prohibition, the city has not developed those types of performance standards because they're prohibited, certainly. But there are general provisions in the sign code that deal with traffic safety concerns, basically.
Okay. Second question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Can you, I don't, I'm assuming that the ban on billboards predates all of us that are sitting here on council today. Do you mind giving a 30-second update, if you have one, or I guess a retrospective, if you will, on how that came to pass?
Mayor, Councilmember Dalisandro, I don't, I should have looked up the date. I don't have the exact date. I know it's for a very long time, and I think that's reflected in the limited number that do exist. I think in some other communities in the Twin Cities have a little bit more prohibited a little bit later. But yeah, I don't have the exact date, but it's been for an extensive period of time. If I had to guess, I would say in the 70s or 80s even.
And do you happen to know justification at the time?
I do, I do not know a justification. My guess is it has to do with some of the same issues that I spoke about with respect to over-commercialization of the public realm and wanting to limit visual distraction and clutter in the public way.
Thank you.
Counsel, additional questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Don't go far. This is a public hearing, item 4.2, and I will open that public hearing now. This is a hearing regarding the sign code lookback ordinance, part two. Now, we, we didn't have any speakers for the first one, so I just want to make sure we got the ground rules. We'll have, each speaker will have up to five minutes, and we've got the shot clock on the wall, so you can keep track of yourself. You could identify yourself as you start. That would be very helpful. And if you ask any questions, we'll answer the questions when we're done with the public hearing in total. All right?
Thank you.
Very good. Fire away.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Once again, my name is Matthew Allen, Clear Channel Outdoor. Just a few comments to add from the last few times I'm in front of you. I certainly want to thank your city staff. I think Nick's done a really thorough job with this. He's been really good to work with. I just want to address some of the concerns he's brought up. Obviously, safety is always a concern. It's our biggest concern. We know we couldn't operate these signs if they didn't. A little bit about how we're regulated. We're regulated at the federal level, the state level, ultimately at the local level. At the federal level, we are permitted to have digital signs based on the extensive safety studies that they did, and they determined that eight-second dwell time can be safely operated with traffic and instantaneous transitions between them. So that's how we operate. Then at the state level, we also are regulated by them. They deal with stuff like intersections where we can actually put the signs, but we're allowed to operate at the state level at that eight seconds as well, subject to city levels, or subject to city regulation. The first time we installed these was back in 2006, so we've been safely operating these for over 19 years. We currently have 83 signs in 22 communities around the Twin Cities, including cities around you, down in Burnsville, Minneapolis, or in St. Paul, and we operate at the airport across from the mall. Again, safety is our priority on these. Couple of ways we handle that is you'll see webcams in front of all the signs we operate. Not only do those webcams let our advertisers know we're putting up their image, it allows us to monitor those signs and make sure there's nothing wrong with them, and there hasn't been. But if there ever was, we can remotely operate that sign and we can shut it off. Obviously, the things we wouldn't want to see is any kind of motion or flickering. Again, there's no motion in these signs. They're instantaneous as they flip. Some of the main reasons, as was said earlier, we only have four signs in your community. They're in appropriate industrial quarters. Our belief, our signs, our digital signs, they're modernized, they're updated. We believe they bring vibrancy and energy to those quarters that they're in. And the main reasons we're upgrading that technology is it allows more opportunities for local businesses to advertise without adding more billboards. It allows more flexibility for those advertisers, whether it's message length of time, doing stuff throughout the Twin Cities. And finally, the digital billboards allow us to further the commitment to the cities we're in. Allows us to invest in those communities. It also allows us to provide public service messaging. Cities do a great job with this. They feel it's an effective tool to communicate with our citizens. They talk about their community meetings, their community centers, their community events, all sorts of stuff. I showed examples in the letter that I sent to you guys to show you just some of the communities they're doing around you. In addition to that, we also offer space for emergency management. We're one of the fastest ways to get an ambulance out, for instance. And then we also work with FBI, emergency services. Um, and then we also work with FBI, emergency services, weather services and that stuff. So with that, I just want to let you know I'm here, uh, for questions, but certainly appreciate your consideration. We'd love to invest in the community and upgrade these signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, question?
Yeah, I got a quick question. Sorry, you already said that. Um, you, you indicated that you're regulated by the state and federal government. Can you give me an indication of what that looks like? Do they verify your, um, the cycle times on this? Do they, uh, what else do they regulate, um, in terms of, uh, your billboards?
Great question, Councilmember. What I meant by that is they set the ordinances and the statutes and the laws for that. So I have to meet their minimum laws. Um, and the way it works, the state stat, or I'm sorry, the federal regulations are actually enforced by the state statutes. The states, they have a federal-state agreement and those are determined by state permits. So this, it's our state law and we have to get what are called MINDOT outdoor advertising permits to operate the signs. So that's how it's kind of regulated and then everything boils down, subject to what local control wants to do.
So, but if someone had a complaint, they could go to the state, you're subject to permits.
Yep.
The state has enforcement mechanisms in place to say, eh, that was seven seconds.
Yeah, I believe you would be correct, Councilmember, yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Additional questions, counsel? All right, very good. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Do we have anyone on the phone?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the chambers here? Counsel, no one in the chambers coming forward. We have no one on the phone. Look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Rivas to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero, closing the public hearing. So counsel, thoughts on this? Uh, we've, we've talked signs. Goodness knows we've talked signage, uh, and I, what I appreciate is that we, we've taken our time on this and have looked back and, and made some thoughtful decisions based on what we've decided on in the past. And this is, these are two fairly decent, uh, examples of that. And I think more than anything that gives, that shows that, uh, what we do is not carved in granite. And, and I think we, we can evolve and learn based on what we learned from users, based from, based on what we hear from residents, based on what we hear from, uh, research that comes forward. And with that in mind, I, I know we've had this conversation and I appreciate the planning commission recommendation, but I think these two make some very good sense. I think additional signage on top of tall buildings gives them, uh, a revenue stream and another incentive to attract tenants, which we know are sometimes an issue. Uh, and I do think, I think they kind of add to the vibrancy of, of an area also. As you go down 494 and see a number of buildings with their, the company name on the outside, I think it gives it a little bit of pizzazz that people know the, the, the business community here in the city of Bloomington. And regarding the, the dwell times, we've been back and forth on this and I've always thought, uh, if there was some real rock-solid evidence of, of crashes where this is used with an eight-second dwell time, I would be more concerned. But we literally, in one of the busiest places in the Twin Cities, at the airport, across 494 from us, with a massive sign that is, that is active, uh, I don't think we've heard of any kind of issues with it. And with that in mind, without the, the real evidence that these might be a, a specific or in a significant safety hazard, I mean, I'd be in favor of the eight-second dwell time. Now, we can argue or we can talk about aesthetics, but the fact that our four billboards are on 394, or 494 and 35W, I think we're, we're not necessarily messing up downtown anywhere either. So those are my thoughts. Uh, be interested and, and happy to hear it from the rest of the council. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I tend to agree with you and your comments. Um, with regards to the signage, I'm very proud of our business community and I hope they have every opportunity to say that they're in Bloomington. I think it's a good thing for Bloomington, like you mentioned. Uh, we should be proud of those businesses being here and located here and getting the opportunity for them to put their name up, up there. Um, and I don't think it's distracting, especially multiple stories up in the air, uh, while you're driving. Uh, with regards to the dwell time, um, I'm just going to say that, uh, and, and this may not come as a shock to my colleagues here, I, I would prefer to just eliminate this from our code and let the state enforce it. Uh, I don't like redundant codes. I don't like redundant ordinances. I think we focus on what we need to and limit what we need to on there, but in terms of the eight-second dwell time, I, I'm very comfortable with that. It seems consistent with state, federal, uh, local area ordinances and things like that. I just, my only request is that we don't spend time enforcing this when other entities are doing that. So, but that's consistent, I think, with other comments I make elsewhere. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Others? Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just went on a trip this weekend and 494 up in, in Prairie. It was, I noticed it from probably 300 yards away. And I paid attention because we've been talking about this and right as I got up to it, then it switched. And I was like, oh, that's not too bad. And then I asked my wife, I was like, hey, did you notice that? She's like, what? What are you talking about? Um, and so I, I, I support the eight-second rule. I think there, there is no definitive data that we've seen anywhere in any research that shows that it, it is dangerous, especially for still, um, images. And unless you're really paying attention to it and looking for it, um, people just aren't paying attention that often. And if they are, they're glancing, um, which is making that impression. And so I, I support the, the eight-second rule. And I also support the, the tall building, um, signage, uh, in particular because we're keeping the surface area of those signs the same. We're not allowing them to, to increase that area, um, to put bigger signs on buildings. And so I think that in itself governs and allows those businesses, those companies, those property owners to, um, attract more tenants to their, their buildings in a time when we know that it's a challenge to continue to keep office space fill, filled. And so whatever we can do to continue to support that without, uh, being detrimental to Bloomington, I think this makes sense for us.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, uh, really appreciate the opportunity for us to advertise the businesses that are here. I mean, I think we sleep, sit on just an incredible number of really cool companies that, um, do have their headquarters here. I, you know, as a Hatch, uh, Bloomington judge, for example, I'm constantly reminded about the fact that we have a lot of headquarters for franchises that are nationwide here and nobody knows that they live here, right? I mean, we've got Dairy Queen and Holiday and Caribou and all these other ones who are franchised all around the, you know, region in the country and we don't talk about it. And I think we should and we can. Um, and so the more the merrier, as it comes to that, especially on the buildings where we want them to, to have their businesses and grow. So certainly supportive of that. Um, and as it relates to the eight-second rule, which I guess is what I'm calling it now, I don't know. Um, I, I don't see an issue with it. Um, I, I am actually encouraged by the idea that especially the partners that, um, we have in Clear Channel, if, you know, if we need to use those signs for public emergency, if we need, um, safety messaging, if we need, um, community messages to get out there that they're willing to work with us and support that, that's part of their business model. Um, I really appreciate that for the community, um, especially along those corridors. I think it, another way of attracting, you know, a, hey, did you know that this was happening right here in this place that you're driving by right now? I think that that's really cool. Um, just as a, of another comment, I, I, um, I don't understand why we don't have more billboards either. I just, I guess I'll just throw that out there because I'm, I'm just confused as to how that all came to pass. Um, but I feel it a little outmoded and maybe that there's opportunity for us to do something about it in the future if we feel like we need to. Um, but either way, for the four that we have, I think this would be a great upgrade and I think would help the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I agree with much of, much of what has been said by my colleagues up here. Um, I do have some concerns about safety regarding the eight seconds versus 20 seconds. Um, but, you know, I'm willing, it, it sounds like there's consensus up here to go with the eight seconds and so I'm, I'm willing to go along with that. I am curious, at the planning commission meeting, um, and their vote not to support this, um, was it, I, I did read the notes and it wasn't super clear to me, was it just their general feeling of not liking billboards that really led them to make this recommendation? Or did they have some specific concerns around safety or other things?
Mr. Johnson?
I don't know, I'm trying to push the button. It's, uh, always on right here. Um, forgive me, Mayor and Councilmember Carter. So I, I would say there was a mix of different comments. Um, I think they were more aesthetic, uh, based than traffic safety-based. Uh, the one thing I'll say that one planning commissioner shared is the concern around hotel guests, uh, that some of these signs are visible to some of the hotels in the community. So, you know, oftentimes we're focused on the nuisance that it presents to residential uses, so that was one item, uh, that was discussed. But as I mentioned before, uh, when, uh, it was requested that, uh, billboards be allowed to convert, if you recall, even they couldn't convert, uh, previously regardless of what the dwell time was. Uh, the planning commission at that time was, uh, fairly consistently against that as well. Uh, so I think it just had to have been, uh, um, consistent perspective along, all along the way, uh, that that was not the right, um, uh, look for, uh, the community. But there's many different opinions about that, certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's what I was recalling too. Um, so I think because we only have four billboards, um, I'm not as concerned about the aesthetic, um, issues and I'm not, again, I have some concerns about the timing, but again, because we only have four, it doesn't seem to be. If we had 20 or 30 billboards along 494 and they were all changing, then I would have more concern. Um, but yeah, overall I can support these changes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Rivas?
Just a quick comment. I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Nelson's, uh, remark in regards to, um, let the state and the county or whoever, or the feds regulate this, uh, and as a city stay out of it. And in regards to the tall buildings and the rest of the comments, I agree with. I think, uh, um, with the exception of more billboards, I think we should keep them out. But, uh, the addition of, uh, tall building signs for each company, every size in those buildings, it would be awesome to see that, uh, rather than just one for the, for the building owner. In most cases, I, we, that's what we see, but there are other companies inside that don't have any representation outside. That would be nice to see. But other than that, I agree pretty much with every, what everybody has said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, just one quick comment. So I know it's not the focus of the conversation tonight around enforcement, um, but I would be curious, maybe in a follow-up email, if we could get more information from staff on, you know, what is the responsibility, um, of, for each of the jurisdictions around enforcement? Cause I know that there are plenty of laws that are in place at the federal and state level that are enforced at the local level. Like even though the laws are in place at the state and federal, they're not enforced at those levels. And so I guess I just, before we start making decisions or, you know, like, um, I just want to make sure we're fully informed before putting out like pretty strong opinions.
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, it would fully be my expectation that the city would be responsible to enforce that. Um, and one clarification, the state's, uh, rule around, uh, electronic sign dwell time is, uh, um, signs along state highways, which I believe are located within, uh, right-of-way through some type of encroachment agreement or use agreement. And so this is a matter of local control. It's not like a state rule that exempts, uh, local, uh, regulation of it. So I fully expect that, that the city of Bloomington staff are responsible for regulating it. And that has been the case with other electronic signs, not in, uh, cooperation with the dwell time, so.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And to that, Councilmember, I'm going to opine that, uh, with the effort that it might take to get this done, I don't think that our friends at Clear Channel are going to put it in jeopardy in any way, shape or form by, by having five-second dwell time, that kind of thing. I just can't see that happening. Counsel, I can count noses and, uh, so Mr. Johnson had the recommendation from the planning commission, but we have in our packet on the motion sheet, the, uh, a motion that, uh, would be in favor of these changes. And again, counting noses, I count six of them actually, and I would look for a motion based on what we're seeing here, uh, in the, the public packet regarding this, uh, item 4.2. Councilmember Delisandro?
Happy to make the motion, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go with the second one, right? Recommend the following motion. Here we go. Uh, I am making motion to adopt ordinance, uh, amending electronic sign and tall building sign standards in the sign code, thereby amending chapter 21 of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the ordinance amending electronic sign and tall building sign standards in the sign code, thereby amending chapter 21 of the city code. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Delisandro?
I move, uh, to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication, uh, of the ordinance to amend, uh, sign, electronic sign and tall building sign standards in the sign code, thereby amending chapter 21 of the city code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, uh, for summary publication on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, and, uh, thank you to our friends from Clear Channel for opining once again. Thanks so much. We will move on to item 4.3. This is our third public hearing of the evening. This is regarding privately initiated city code amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use in C1 zoning district. Emily Hesback from our city planning department is here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, thanks for having me tonight. Uh, so like the mayor said, we are talking about, um, a privately initiated city code amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district. Um, okay, there we go. Perfect timing. Okay, so first I just wanted to talk about, um, this specific property. The applicant, um, is 7930 Computer Ave. So it's the, um, parcel outlined in red and it's zoned at CS1, which is Commercial Services and Guided Community Commercial. It is just north of 494 and east of Highway 100. Um, approximately 6,100 square feet are proposed to be used for the proposed health club with other, um, with the other part of the building being industrial. Um, as far as parking goes, health clubs require one parking spot per 250 square feet, which in this instance would be 25 spots and the property has 42 on site. So, um, this map is outlining in red, um, all the parcels that are part of the CS1 zoning district. There are 38 parcels in the district. And then just to talk a little bit about the CS1 zoning district specifically, um, the intent is to provide for the development of service use near freeway interchanges, uh, provision of food, lodging, automotive service, motor vehicle fuel and other goods and services are supposed to be the principal uses. However, other uses which are interrelated to these uses are also appropriate in this district. So staff feels that, um, health club is inter, interrelated to uses permitted in the district. Um, additionally, most of the parcels are located along 494, which provides fewer traffic And then we'll move on to the definition of health club. Um, so you can see we have a pretty expansive definition for health club. It's what you would typically think of as your big box gyms, but could also be smaller[1662.97] big box gyms, but could also be smaller gyms or studios. In this specific case for this property, we would be talking about something which is falling under martial arts. This map, all the colors show all the parcels that have allowances for health clubs in the city currently. And so the table shows that there's a pretty expansive list of where health clubs are currently either permitted, a permitted limited use, or permitted when located near certain roads. So staff feels comfortable adding health clubs as a permitted use to the CS1 zoning district. So there are no specific findings for this type of application, but staff finds this change to be appropriate based on the intent of the CS1 zoning district and is therefore recommending approval through the following motion on the screen. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of Ms. Hespeck? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So can you explain to me why martial arts and maybe some of the other ones like swimming are health club versus sports facility? Because I believe that actually not too far from there, we had looked at previously a, if I recall correctly, it was lacrosse or something. It was probably like five years ago, an indoor sports facility. How is, how is a health club different than sports-related type of facility? And why are they distinct, I guess?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, you know, I actually can't really tell you. So we have kind of three uses which are pretty similar. Health club, health club, sports training facility, and indoor rec and entertainment can kind of be, they can all sometimes be like a Venn diagram. And so this is something as a planning division that we're aware of and hopefully are looking to make more clear and I think more potentially permissive in the future. But there are just kind of a good amount of things that kind of overlap. And we are often debating, is this a health club? Is this a sports training facility? So doesn't really answer your question, but some explanation.
No, actually, I think it's great. Can I ask one quick follow-up? Do we run any risks if we approve this tonight that we're going to put ourselves in a box based on what you're thinking you might do in the future and looking at sort of that clarification?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's a good question. I don't think so, just based on honestly, this zoning district specifically and how small it is. And it's not really a zoning district that we're like, or kind of working on potentially phasing it out. So I don't think that this specific change for this application would really box us into anything that we might regret later.
Counsel, any other questions? No other questions? Then we will open up this public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on item 4.3. This is a privately initiated city code amendment to allow health clubs as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district. Anyone in the audience here in city council chambers wish to speak to item 4.3 this evening? No one coming forward? Do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
Last call. Anybody here? Counsel, no one in the chamber is coming forward, no one speaking or no one calling in to speak on this. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to close the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Counsel, thoughts on this? Councilmember Nelson?
I support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember DeLisandro? I will say, counsel, in addition to, I think, adding the flexibility within the CS1 zoning district, and this is the city of Bloomington, I think we have to acknowledge that literally just to the north and just to the west, there's a growing residential population in Edina. And I think this, this type of business would certainly serve as the neighborhood and is an appropriate use in this area because of that growing residential area that's, I mean, literally just on the other side of the jurisdictional lines. Any other comments or questions, counsel? If not, I would look for motion on it, look for action on item 4.3.
Happy to do that, Mayor.
Councilmember Mua?
I would move to adopt an ordinance adding health club as permitted use in the CS1 zoning district, thereby amending chapter 21 of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to add health clubs as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district, thereby amending chapter 21 of the city code. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Councilmember Mua?
The mayor had moved to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance adding health code as health club as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district, thereby amending chapter 21 of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, for summary publication of item 4.3 tonight. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. We will move on, counsel, to our item 4.4 this evening. Our final public hearing of the evening. This is regarding the SAC fee ordinance, an update related to ICC charges. Sean Lundey, who is our special projects and initiatives manager, is here to present this. Good evening, Mr. Lundey.
That's correct. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. See, do we have a PowerPoint? There we go. Yep. So Sean Lundey, Special Projects and Initiatives with the Department of Community Development. I'm here to wrap up our long-standing discussion about the city SAC. So I'll try to make this as quick as possible. So, quick overview of how we got to where we are today. In December 2024, the city sewer availability charge fee ordinance was adopted by this body, the city council. It went into effect on January 1st of this year. At that point in December, the council requested additional research by staff on several different components of that ordinance. Those research findings were presented in April, so I won't get into the outcomes there. But one of the, one of the, the research topics, we did choose to move forward with an update to the ordinance. So now here in June, we are providing that updated ordinance. To give you some brief context on what was presented in April, this, this update relates to the industrial capacity charge. Specifically, the Met Council offers an ICC program for high-use industrial users. I, I won't read the bullet points to you, but the city SAC ordinance that we had did not address how we're going to interact with that ICC program. So the ordinance clarification that we have before us this evening clarifies that the city SAC ordinance does not have an ICC program. And it also addresses additional issues that come up with the ordinance on a case-by-case basis. Those are the recommendations presented in April, and that is what we have clarified in the ordinance and brought to you this evening. There's one additional point that staff came across as we were doing these ordinance clarifications. We thought that we could strengthen this ordinance by adding language that allows the city manager to adjust that city SAC fee proportional to what the Met Council city SAC, or the Met Council SAC adjustment is when appropriate. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have at this time. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Lundey on this one?
You stunned them all to silence. Well done. So.
Hey, did my job.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lundey. We will open this public hearing now. This is a public hearing on item 4.4. This is regarding the SAC fee ordinance update related to ICC charges. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak on this item tonight? No one coming forward? Anyone on the phone this evening?
Mayor, there's no one on the phone.
No one on the phone. Last call for anybody here in the chambers. Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Nelson, to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Counsel, any questions, comments, concerns on this one? Councilmember DeLisandro?
I, I just wanted some clarification, if I could, please, Mr. Mayor. The, the, the motion, as I understand it, is basically to enable the city manager or a designee to make an adjustment that's proportional to the ICC charge itself, right? Okay. So, so is there ever a time when that's zero? Like, could, could the, could that, that adjustment mean zero to both the, from an ICC and a city perspective?
Kim Bergen, our community development director is going to answer that one.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember DeLisandro, the city manager adjustments is not related to the ICC charges. We are not recommending an ICC program. The ability for the city manager to make adjustments relates to how the coordination that we do with Met Council around SAC. Sometimes they make decisions to make small adjustments for various reasons. And so we would like to be able to match up those adjustments with the city SAC program when it makes sense to do so. Sometimes there's just weird things that are happening at properties that have Met Council making that decision. So we wanted to have that same flexibility so businesses don't feel like there's a different treatment between the Met Council application and our application.
Okay, okay. I think I understand. So, so if, so what is happening then is the Met Council is making a determination about what the total SAC charges would be. So they're really adjusting like how they're deciding what the SAC charge would be. And then we would then proportionally adjust accordingly to match that. So if, if it was, instead of 1,000, it was 500, we would say, okay, ours is also 500 as opposed to, ours is still 1,000 even though theirs is only 500. Do I kind of have that right?
That's correct.
Proportionally? Okay. All right, great. And I apologize, I said ICC. I should have understood that it's not their charge construct, it's them helping us to decide what the SAC unit number is to begin with. When we say then, so the only other question I have is, I, I guess, it's never zero then is what you're telling me because they've never done that? Or is there technically the ability for it to be zero? Like, would they ever say we are determining no SAC charges?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, the, every time a project happens, the Met Council makes the SAC determination. So there could be the case that projects have a zero determination based on flows. But usually new construction does create SAC unit as a determination.
Okay. What, all I'm just trying to understand is what the burden we have is if they make that determination on our behalf essentially, right? So, so if they make the determination that, that they're not going to charge, or they're going to charge what we would think is a really small determination against the proportion of the thing, what, who's on the hook to pay for it? Who's on the hook to do the needful, I guess, around the, the volume that we might have to manage?
Bergen?
Yeah, Councilmember DeLisandro, we always use the, the Met Council SAC determination, whatever that is, to decide how much city SAC we're applying. So if they determine zero, it's zero. If they determine five, it's five. Like, that's how the program is set up and how the ordinance is set up. So, yeah, we're always relying on them to make the determination about whether or not there's increased capacity needed for the, for the sewer access charge.
Okay. So, so I think I understand. So there's no chance that we would say, okay, the MAC says there's no increase required, but we think that there's an increase required. Therefore, we're going to charge these people for more capacity. We're never going to do that.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Then I understand. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm with the engineers that I was interpreting right. I got a nod.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, the authority for the city manager would be to adjust the SAC charge, not the determination. So we have a certain charge, I forget what, how much it was per SAC unit or whatever, but the Met Council may adjust theirs and we would adjust ours proportionately to theirs. This isn't on an individual property determination. This is an overall charge basis that we're given the authority to. Is that accurate? Or does that make no sense?
Let me see if I can answer this properly. The, the, that second statement in the ordinance is just offering the opportunity for the city manager to make an adjustment in the rare instance that the Met Council is making some type of adjustment. Sometimes they make a decision that they're only going to apply 80% of their fee, for whatever reason it is that they make that decision. So then that would allow the city manager to look at that situation and make that same determination, so that we're not applying 100% when the Met Council is only applying 80%. So it would apply to either the fee or the unit count as written.
Yeah, good. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. One piece on that. So essentially, if the MAC raises SAC fees, we would raise our proportionally, right? So if they raise theirs 20%, we would keep it 20%. So it's a, up to date? That's kind of my question. No.
No, that's not accurate. We would come back to you for any fee increases for the city SAC. The city SAC fee amount is set separate from the fee amount that Met Council. The units are the ones that match up.
Thank you for the clarification, counsel. Are any additional clarifying questions here? This is, just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing here. We're all good? All right. So based on, based on that, we haven't had a motion yet, have we? I've lost track here. Councilmember DeLisandro, I look for action on item 4.4.
Happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. And thank you again for the discussion. Appreciate the clarifications. So I'm moving that we adopt an ordinance clarifying the applicability of optional charges in calculating city sewer availability charges and adding an allowance for adjustment to the city sewer availability charge, thereby amending chapter 11 of the city code.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Nelson?
Was it because, was it something I said?
To adopt the ordinance clarifying the application of optional charges in calculating city service availability charges. Counsel, discussion on this? Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to say, I'm not going to be supporting this just because I didn't support the original implementation of our SAC ordinance. So I'm going to be against this motion.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments on this? If not, we've got a motion and a second on the table to approve item 4.4 as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries 5-1 with Councilmember Mua in opposition. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance clarifying the applicability of optional charges in calculating city sewer availability charges and adding an allowance for judgment to the city sewer availability charge, thereby amending chapter 11 of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Rivas for summary publication of item 4.4. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. I'm glad we put this one to bed and we can start to move forward on this now as well. Thank you. Cleaning up all kinds of things tonight. We're going to move to item 5 in our agenda, our organizational business. And counsel, I just want to say, 7:35, we've, we've done well on our first hour and a half, staff as well. We have done well in our first hour and a half. We still have some meaty items to consider. And I would ask that we continue to move this along and make sure that we don't get bogged down on anything. Item 5.1 is a discussion on our prevailing wage. Sarah Abe, our HRA administrator, is here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I think I have a presentation coming up. And, you know, I keep looking at this timer and thinking, it can't be only 5 o'clock. It is not only 5 o'clock, that is 5 minutes. So, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Sarah, HRA administrator, here to present on the prevailing wage discussion. Okay. So, quick background, this was adopted on June 17th, 2024. It was in effect as of June 27th, 2024. So we're actually almost at exactly a year since this was passed and started being implemented. And just a quick background or summary of what it is, it requires prevailing wages be paid when the total project cost is over $175,000. So it doesn't matter the amount of city funding. It could be a dollar, it could be the full project cost. What triggers it is that there's any amount of city funding in the project and the total cost is over $175,000. So now here we are, we're a year in, and staff is considering some, some cleanup and then potentially some policy interpretations or changes and coming to council for direction. I'll also note, this is the first stop, so this is a discussion item meant to determine if the council is interested in moving forward. If so, then staff will go forward with additional stakeholder engagement and come back with a more formal proposal later. And this was prepared in a collaboration between Port, HRA, and legal staff. Okay, so I'll just run through some of these we identified as administrative adjustments. So part of the reason we're recommending some of these things is because, as we all know, prevailing wage is complex. There's a lot of details in the administration of these ordinances and laws. And so these would kind of clean up and clarify a few things and just make sure that accurate information is clearly represented in the ordinance. And so this first one is to align, these align with the goal and some of the intent of the ordinance as passed. But again, it's just kind of cleanup. So this would be to add exemptions for housing projects in alignment with federal law. So federal law exempts projects that are seven units or less. And so this would add language to our ordinance to clearly identify that. Our ordinance is based on the city of St. Paul's ordinance, and so the city of St. Paul's ordinance does include language like this. Part of the reason we're basing it on them is because they've had many years of experience implementing this, this ordinance. The second piece is to clarify that things like pass-through funds, conduit bonds, do not, this ordinance does not apply to these projects. In many cases, or some cases, funding for these types of projects doesn't go through the city. There's no actual city money involved. Sometimes they don't even necessarily hit city accounts. So it would just be clarification that if there's no actual city dollars, that this ordinance does not apply. And then the third one here is authorization for administrative rulemaking. So this has been applied for the Earn, Sick and Safe Time ordinance that was passed recently. And so one example would be when wage rates need to be updated on multi-year proj- and so, one example would be, um, when wage rates need to be updated on multi-year projects. So, for example, you know, if a project takes several years for construction, is the prevailing wage rate at the time, the rate that stays through the whole project, does it get updated, uh, annually at the, the anniversary date of the contract execution? Does it get updated annually when new prevailing wage rates are, are released annually? When exactly does that happen? So that's an example of the types of, um, specific details around administration of the ordinance that this kind of change would allow, um, staff to publish and, um, clarify out for people who are trying to understand how this applies to their projects. All right, and that's it for administrative, um, recommendations. Now we move into the policy considerations. There are two here. One is to allow the city council to basically make exemptions when there are extreme situations or very unique conditions, um, particularly around extreme financial burden. And we do have a case study, um, before you tonight as to why we think this would be helpful and what kind of situations, and I'll get into that in the next few slides, but the idea here is to allow the council to adapt to current conditions and specific conditions, because as we know in development, each site is different. Um, the second piece here is to exempt housing developments of twenty units, units or less. So, this, um, kind of expands the Davis Bacon exemptions that are already in place, um, up to the twenty units. And the reason for this is because twenty units are still pretty small, um, housing development projects. It does align with some of our thinking around what is a missing middle project, which, um, is something that there's been a lot of conversation around, how can we support some of these smaller-scale projects? Um, it supports local developers and local small businesses, because some of the, uh, challenges with implementing prevailing wages around the administrative burden for these smaller businesses. So the idea is to expand that exemption, um, make it broader, and then allow, you know, for, um, more space for some of these small local businesses to, um, to move forward with their projects. Okay, and here is the, um, case study example that I mentioned. This is the Drury Site. You can see it's here at the intersection of France and Minnesota. Um, it's a large site, it's had many, several different proposals since twenty seventeen, has been under consideration for a while. Um, Enclave Development, um, did propose a development project that stood on its own. It didn't need any city assistance. Um, and then we found that there was some significant soil contamination on the site, to the extent where around twenty feet of soil will have to be removed and replaced. And so, that added a really significant project cost to this project. We're estimating here around five and a half to seven million, could be in the upper ranges of that, or the upper, um, end of that range. Um, and, so, because the, um, the, the, the mechanism that the city would use to fund this gap is TIF, Tax Increment Financing. And because that is then city money, then that triggers the prevailing wage requirement. And, like, let me actually show you on the next slide, there's a nice little chart here that kind of lays it out. So, it was a standalone project, the soil remediation would require five and a half to seven million dollars of TIF. That, um, in it, using TIF as the prevailing wage requirement, which adds about another seven million dollars to the project cost. Um, the, we could use TIF to clean up the soils. Um, we have enough TIF generated from the project to be able to do that. Unfortunately, the amount of TIF generated for the project does not then cover the gap that's created when we add prevailing wage. So, this case study kind of shows the request be that, um, council could exempt the building from the prevailing wage requirements because, and focus the prevailing wage requirements on the soil cleanup process, which is where the city dollars are needed. So this is, you can see it's very specific, it's specific to the site, it's specific to this project, um, but currently there's no mechanism under the ordinance for the council to be able to make this decision. So this is the proposal that we could put together language that would allow the council to, to, um, exempt certain projects or, or phases of projects. Okay, and then that brings us to the discussion. This is, uh, just a summary of the different changes that I, I covered here today. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do also have the, uh, if there are questions about that particular project and that case study, we do have the developer online, online able to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Council questions on this discussion, especially on the, uh, we'll start with the, the administrative amendments. Exempt housing projects under eight units, classify, clarify pass-through and conduit bond, bond funding is exempt and authorized rulemaking. Any thoughts on that one, council? I will say the one that catches my eye is the exempt the housing projects under eight units for the, the reasons discussed and, and what you've laid out. Um, are there, and, and as we get into the next one of twenty units or less as well, the, the protections, do we have any additional protections, even in these smaller projects, uh, against wage theft or, or some of the reasons why we went toward, uh, prevailing wage in the first place?
Yeah, Mayor, council members, um, so, these would still fall under, um, the state law and Department of Labor's protection. So the Department of Labor does have some guidance issued. Um, people can submit complaints to any issues of wage theft, and they have in the past followed up on a number of these complaints. Um, they also have some guidance issued for, um, for workers and how to address issues and, and how to, uh, know, or how to tackle the issue, the question of wage theft.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, when I was thinking about this issue beforehand, I know that, um, you know, I ultimately voted for the prevailing wage, um, but one of my concerns was, I think the marketplace should determine a lot of things, but wage theft is, is not something that we should tolerate. And what had been proposed to us at that time was that prevailing wage was a very effective means of preventing wage theft. And what I've been thinking about is there's some type of light version of prevailing wage, where you take out the prevailing wage portion of it, but still potentially have the reporting requirement, so that you know how many people are working on the site, you know that they're being paid, you know that they're being paid, you know, uh, at least in accordance with state law, federal law, that sort of thing. Is there, is there a way to do that with that? I know there's a tool that, that's used for this, to do it without the increased cost and burden, let the marketplace kind of figure those things out, but still have those controls, like you said, Mayor, about wage theft? Because that, that, in my mind, that, that is the biggest issue here, that, that people would not be paid what they were supposed to be paid, that they would be, frankly, have their money stolen. It's just theft. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's theft like any other ti- any other kind, in my mind. And so, is there a way, is there a way to do a light version that doesn't impact these projects, the twenty units or less, or if there's a, a project with apparently very bad soil, that sort of thing, that, that we could have that type of tool? So, that, that's what ran through my mind, if, if that makes any sense.
I think it does, Councilmember, and, and I'll ask Ms. Abe if, if there's a, a direct possibility, but I do want to say that our, you know, our discussion tonight, even though we can, it is just discussion, so we can talk wide, you know, and talk widely on this. Uh, but it's, it's something to consider, uh, trying to stick within our guided discussion here. I do appreciate your comments, but, uh, the guided discussion, I think, is where we need to head. Uh, thoughts on, on that? I mean, I got registered there, your, your comments. Thoughts on any of the administrative amendments, or Councilmember Carter?
I have a clarifying question, maybe. Um, so in the memo, it, the, um, there's the administrative amendment to exempt housing projects under eight units, and then the, it's kind of posed as an alternative, um, in the policy amendment to exempt housing projects of twenty units or less. So we could do noth- we can make no changes, um, but then it seems like it's either one or the other. Is that true?
Well, um, it's the way it's split like that is because I think the intent of the ordinance was to exempt those projects that are already exempt under federal law. So, the cleanup would be to make that clear. The policy decision for the council would be to extend it up to the twenty units.
Okay, so really, under administrative amendments, number one, I mean, we're, that's not really, it's just cleanup. So we really probably shouldn't spend a ton of time on that. It's really the number two under policy amendments. Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, I guess I can, I can make a couple of, um, comments. So, uh, I do have some concerns of exempting housing projects of twenty units or less, just because of the, um, issues around wage theft and other things that we've talked about in the past. Um, so I guess I'm wondering, could you speak a little bit more, um, the reasoning why, um, development staff is proposing this exemption be in place?
Yeah. Uh, Mayor, council members, there's been a lot of conversation, particularly around the missing middle. Um, there are a number of developers that are local developers that do some of these, like, smaller scale, like four to sixteen units, um, housing types like a, a townhome development or something like that. And so, those, um, the developers who are taking those projects are exactly those that would maybe struggle with some of the administrative, uh, burden around that. So, there's been a lot of conversation around, this is, missing middle is a housing type that is missing. That's why it's called missing middle, um, it, but there's very little of it in the area. And so, um, in order to encourage that type of development by not adding additional administrative requirements or additional funding gap for that type of small-scale project, that's why we're recommending expend, expanding it even more.
Um, so maybe along similar lines as Councilmember Nelson, then I'm just wondering, maybe even just for like the twenty units or less projects, is there still, if we were to allow this, um, exemption, is there some way still to protect against the things that we have had concerns about and that we've gotten reports about? And, and I don't need an answer now, but I guess, you know, how, how would we prevent those things from happening in those smaller projects? Are there tools there?
Ms. Berger, any comment?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, if I could just add one comment related to the distinction between the twenty units and less and the larger community apartment developments. Um, one of the things that we hear from people that are in the industry is that the same, the type of, um, contractors and, um, businesses, developers that are doing the small-scale housing, they're not the same groups as the groups doing the larger-scale multifamily housing. Um, they're not as practiced at doing, have, they don't often have as many unionized labor, and they don't have the same practices in place administratively. And so that's why folks draw that distinction between the housing types. Um, and, you know, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this, but I do know that at least the experiences I've had with people identifying situations of abuse, the multifamily apartments have been identified more frequently. Um, that's not to say that there's not abuse in other industries too, I, you know, I can't commit to that, but I do know that that's where the, um, light has been shown more recently. Um, so I just wanted to point out that distinction with construction type. Um, and I just, I think it's a good idea to look in if we have any other ideas around, um, ways that we can prevent wage theft, because it's a, we, we know it's a serious problem.
Right, thank you. Um, I guess my last comment then would be around, um, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be doing this, but, uh, the waiving requirements in extreme situations. And I think it makes sense to consider this, but if we do go down this path, I think we have to have really clear criteria for when those projects can come before council, because I think it could be a very slippery slope and all of a sudden we're kind of exempting anything and everything. And so, um, yeah, I guess those are my, my thoughts. It's just having very clear, strict criteria.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Delisandro, and then Councilmember Muah. Councilmember Delisandro?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, appreciate you all bringing this forward. I, I, I just, one quick clarification, of the five things that are in front of us right now, the, the, um, documentation provided in the case study is only relevant to the first one under policy amendment, correct? All the other ones don't have any?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, so I'm going to ignore that just for a second here, because, um, that to me does, because I have questions about that. But, um, okay, so, the administrative amendments, like, as Councilmember Carter said, they're, they seem okay to me to be comfortable with, because they're largely clarifications. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the authorized rulemaking part that all that well, um, but I think if our goal is to make, especially for burdening people who are i- in these smaller developments where cost, uh, margins are harder to come by, um, making administrative rules easier, sounds like it saves them money, and that's a good thing. So I guess I'll go with that, because that seems to be one of the issues, burdening them administratively. Um, a big part of the dialogue right now about, about housing in general is about the, the amount of a housing project's costs that go into just making the thing happen in the first place, which I think is terrible for us, right? We should be wanting as much money as possible going into the construction of the house, not paying all of us who sit around and opine about whether or not it's a good thing or not, right? Um, so, um, you know, from, from, I'm, I'm up for all kinds of, and I know I'm not, I probably won't be the one that votes for administrative review, um, or ignoring administrative review on environmental grounds, uh, given my history, but, um, even that I understand from time to time. Um, when it comes to the policy amendments, though, um, exempting housing projects of twenty or less, the, the, I, I feel, I, I get where that's coming from, but I, you know, the whole, i- if I remember our conversations about prevailing wage, there were two things that, the, the wage theft thing notwithstanding. The big thing was, you know, there's a, there's a burden, um, placed on the worker to guarantee they get their money when they're not doing it up, up in plain, in plain sight. And so, you know, we, we heard stories about, um, uh, the, the safety considerations for the workers, the, the ability for, um, you know, them to have middle, middle-class jobs, if you will, et cetera. And I, you know, wage theft and way, prevailing wage things to me are a little bit different. They go together in the sense that if you, if you're paying people good wages and you're above board about that, you're not stealing from them, you're also guaranteeing a higher level of safety and a better out, hopefully, a better product output, right? Um, you know, pulling people in from, uh, uh, other states, um, doing shoddy development, you know, all these things are, just to get the low bid on something isn't a good idea. We don't want that, we never want that, even if they are actually paying everybody, you know, that we still don't want that. So I want to, you know, make sure I understand the, the notion for prevailing wage. Now, I, I, I have to say this only because I misspoke when I last spoke with, um, with the, with staff about the way that prevailing wage is determined in Minnesota. Um, I learned this because I wanted to do this research. My understanding is that we, we use, uh, the mode, not the mean, if you will, here in Minnesota. So essentially, the more, the, the, the wage that is reported the most is the wage that everybody has to pay. And I didn't know that. I thought it was like an average, a weighted average or something like that. Um, and we don't have a, an exemption for that as far as I know. Um, so you can't do average versus weighted, you know, bef- versus mode. So, so again, I'd, I'd implore these people who are concerned about this to, to report their wages, because it, it, the more that that gets reported, if it's the most common number, it, you know, and so these people are, are stuck in the, in the loop, I guess is what I'm trying to say here. Smaller, smaller projects can still report their wages, and their wages still can be counted as, as, as the same. So, if you're paying a hundred people or you're paying fifty people, as long as you're reporting your wages, or you're paying twenty people, you're reporting your wages, they, they have the ability to adjust this number themselves by being good citizens in, in the sense of like reporting this data. And I'm always curious as to know why people aren't taking advantage of the opportunity to share the facts of the case if they want these numbers to change. So, all that having been said, I, I, I can't come up with an extreme circumstances, I can't come up with an extreme circumstance by which I would want us to not pay somebody a prevailing wage, I guess, unless we're talking about certain levels of prevailing wage. Like, I want the lower, lower-paid workers to get as much as they can. If you're talking about a wage of fifty to sixty dollars an hour, I'm not sure I'm going to be like, oh, you're getting fifty instead of sixty, I feel bad for you. Like, that's not going to happen. So, is there a way for us to think about this differently, in the sense that we are doing what we want to be doing with prevailing wage, which is preventing people who could be taken advantage of from, from getting paid market rate for the work that they do? Um, so, I, and I don't know if that's an extreme circumstance or not, I don't know if that counts. Um, so, I, I'm less likely to support the policy amendment pieces here than I, I think I would be if I had, if I had better understanding of how we could stratify it, maybe, um, to make sure that we're solving for the problem that I think we really want to solve for, which is the majority of workers who are getting maybe fifteen dollars an hour, who should be getting twenty-two, and should be getting the kind of protections that they deserve from a prevailing wage ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as far as the administrative amendments, I'm good with one and two. The only thing with three is I want to make sure whenever the state and the Fed makes their adjustments is when we do it. Um, I think if we are in off-cycle, it makes it complicated for the developers and whoever. So, that's where I would like to align, is whenever those adjustments get made at the state or federal level, that's when we make it and not, um, just a different, uh, cycle from them. Um, as far as the policy amendments, I'm, I'm nervous about this one. Uh, I think the, we, we passed this, I think, seven zero, right? Because we believe in what prevailing wage does. It prevents, um, theft of wages from workers. And I think it's, it's hard for us to make the determination that your job shouldn't be covered by prevailing wage. Like, if we, in the example, uh, that was provided, we'll exempt, um, the, the building, but we won't exempt the soil remediation. All right, so, the, uh, the heavy machine equipment loader, workers, the dump truck drivers, you guys are good, we're going to protect you, but when it comes to the building, the plumbers, the carpenters, the welders, you guys, you are on your own, don't deal. the carpenters, the welders, you guys, you are on your own, don't deal with it. And I think that's the, the slope that I'm concerned about. Because we have put this down as a value that we have here in Bloomington, and then for us to, what seems to me arbitrarily choose which groups of workers have this protection doesn't sit right with me, doesn't feel like it's the right thing to do and doesn't align with the values that we have. And so, I would be open to listening to these, but like Councilmember Carter said, the structure has to be very robust, has to be very specific to, to guide us, otherwise I can completely see us getting to the point where we're exempting everything, and then why are we having this conversation? Why do we have this ordinance anymore? So those are my, my thoughts on it. And I want to see, honestly, frankly, more projects come through. I just don't think we have had enough time and a project come through for us to actually see the actual impacts, how this drives, how, we've never gone through a full market cycle yet, like we don't even know what's going to happen in the next two or three years with housing in general. And so, I, I think a little piece of me is way, wanting to wait to see a whole cycle come through, how it impacts us and then make those decisions based on what happened versus kind of predicting at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others? Just, Councilmember Revis.
It's just a question to you, what would you consider an extreme situation to waive the, the requirements?
Yeah, Mayor and councilmembers, so we provided the case study, I think that is an example of an extreme situation. The memo kind of spells it out a little bit more than I did in my presentation, includes some potential criteria that we could use. So, multiple previous development attempts have failed, a site is undevelopable due to certain conditions, would create an additional financing gap. So I think in this case, in order to make the project work, it's a real challenge with the soil cleanup requirements. We don't have a whole lot of options other than essentially the city doing it on our own to prepare the site for development in order to make a development project feasible because of the costs associated with it.
If I may follow up on this, besides that specific example that you gave us, is there any other thing that you can, you would consider extreme for, for us to waive the requirements that are, at the, at the moment are in existence?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmembers, I don't have, I mean, I don't have another extreme example. I think we would need to build out a little bit more using some of these criteria that we already identified. We do believe that this particular case is extreme and so that's why we're using it to illustrate it. I, I think the idea that it is an extreme circumstance is illustrated by the fact that I only have one example, like a clear case around what that could look like.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? And Councilmember Revis, I was going to ask the same question about what, what defines extreme. And it seems to me, I mean, that if the project isn't going to happen otherwise, that would be extreme. And we've, we, I think are probably seeing that here is my guess. And, and your other examples that you gave about failed development, I know, I think I've sat down three or four times with projects about that we're going to go on that Drury Site and never did. And so, there, there's a reason why that it's not coming up and perhaps those would be considered extreme situations. So, it, it would at least be worth a conversation, I think, to consider extreme situations in, in what are literally extreme situations. And I would agree, we, we'd need guardrails of some kind so we're not just waiving something because somebody didn't like it or whatever the reason. But if the numbers pencil out in the way that we've seen, that then now the developer is simply going to walk away from it, that is something we could at least have a conversation over. Enough information out of us now?
I think so.
Very good. All right. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Item 5.2 on our agenda, council, is pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements at West 84th Street and Normandale Boulevard. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jeremy Melquist, I'm a civil engineer here at the city.
And I'm Mike Larson, a traffic engineer with Bolt and Mink.
We're here today to discuss the intersection of 84th Street at Normandale Boulevard. We're looking to get feedback on removing the pedestrian bridge option from the Normandale Lake District Plan and instead adding an at-grade pedestrian crossing improvement. As part of the tax levy reduction strategy, staff have reviewed the necessity of a pedestrian bridge and are recommending an at-grade improvement instead that will accomplish the same district plan goal of enhancing the pedestrian environment at this intersection. Mike from Bolt and Mink will be going over these improvement options and the study.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Mayor and council. So, I'll give you a quick overview of the study, kind of what we're looking at, and then jump into our alternatives that we're arriving at. So as Jeremy alluded to, the, the intersection of 84th and Normandale, really the reason for studying this intersection is we, is I guess twofold. We have land uses surrounding the intersection that are conducive to generating pedestrian activity, we've got a good trail network, we've got the parks, we've got the business park, gas stations, commercial areas, et cetera. So, we know that there is pedestrian demand, but on the other hand, we have a lot of traffic that travels these road, these roadways and through this intersection. So, that makes it a really difficult and uncomfortable area for pedestrians to move across the roadway. And as Jeremy mentioned, we've got this programmed pedestrian bridge that we're looking at the feasibility of that versus more traditional at-grade improvements. So, city staff asked us to take a high-level look at the pedestrian bridge option, what, what might that cost, what level of effort might need to go into that type of improvement, and then what might be some risks with that type of investment. At a high level, we estimate that that piece of infrastructure might cost upwards of $5 million. And the reasons for that are, when you look at the overall footprint on that image on the left, the space it takes to get up and over the roadway and back down is pretty large. So, we've got a high potential for impacting the trees in the parklands, the wetlands with the nearby lakes and ponds, high potential for poor soils, et cetera. So, there's a lot of risk with this type of project, which drives that cost up. In addition, that large footprint, you can see it's a pretty long distance from point A to point B across the bridge. We know that the farther you make pedestrian or bicycles travel out of their way, the less likely they are to take that path. Pedestrians, by nature, they're going to take the fastest path. So, the farther we make them travel, we're going to see less people using it and crossing where they are today, anyway. So, with this study, we look at ways we can make the intersection feel safer for pedestrians while also balancing pedestrian or vehicle mobility, excuse me, won't go into it too much, but the big takeaway here is that this intersection is the highest volume intersection in the entire city. We see more cars travel through this intersection anywhere else in town. So that's, that's a challenge, when we want to make an intersection safer, we want to make the intersection smaller, and that's difficult to do here. We do look at the crash history at the intersection and we do have good news, the intersection's performing pretty well. The crash rate is significantly lower than a similar intersection within the state. We've seen no pedestrian or bike crashes in the last 10 years, and we don't see any concerning crash trends in those right-turning areas where we have high-speed traffic. So we do have three alternatives to present to you all today. I'll go through them at a high level. Alternative one is our left-turn reduction alternative, which we've got double left-turn lanes on all approaches of the intersection. We would seek to remove the left-turn lanes, or the, one of the two left-turn lanes rather, on the south and east legs of the intersection, which would create a nice wide pedestrian refuge island. In addition to that, we'd remove two through lanes from the east side of the intersection for the reducing the crossing distance there. So of the three alternatives, this one is the least impactful or the least expansive, so it's likely the least expensive option. Drawbacks here, we don't touch those high-speed right-turn channelized areas, we don't touch the north and west legs of the intersection, so we don't see any benefits there. And then reducing those left-turn lane areas creates some risk in that left-turn lane queues could spill back into the through lanes, potentially causing rear-end collisions, further degrading delays at the intersection, that type of thing. Our second alternative is our low-entry angle right-turn alternative, which really attacks these big sweeping right-turn lanes that we see at the intersection today, where motorists can drive through them at a high rate of speed, 20, 30 miles an hour, and then when they get to that merge point at the crossroad, you really have to look over your shoulder to see oncoming traffic and decide whether to yield or not. This new, modern design would tighten up that angle, so you can no longer take that curve as fast, and then the driver's line of vision is more oriented with their path of travel rather than over their shoulders. So, vehicles are driving slower, they can stop faster, they can detect pedestrians better, and that's where we see improved safety with this design. So, that's one benefit here. We do also reduce that crossing distance on the east leg again and the west leg by removal of a through lane. Because we still maintain these channelized right-turn lanes in some fashion, we keep the capacity of the intersection as high as possible, so we wouldn't anticipate much change in vehicular operations with this alternative. Drawbacks here, we still do have some form of channelized right-turn lane. The fact of the matter is that some pedestrians, no matter what the design is, feel that this design or the current design is unsafe. In addition to that, because of the geometry of this, those right-turn lane islands are now much smaller than they are today, so a pedestrian might feel a little bit more uncomfortable because they feel like there's less, less buffer between traffic, if you will. And then our last alternative is our hybrid right-turn alternative, which the north half of the intersection would be the same as alternative two, whereas the southern half, we now have a more traditional right-turn lane design where the right-turn lane is next to the through lane. So advantages here, now those right turns on the south and west side of the intersection are controlled by the traffic signal, so those cars would have to obey the traffic lights. That gives our engineers more access to some of the tools in the arsenal on how to improve pedestrian safety, whether it's adjusting signal timings and phasing for right turners, implementing no right turn on a red, those types of, of things. So it gives us a chance to kind of tinker with things a little bit more. In addition to that, this, now that southern pedestrian crossing at the bottom of the intersection, that crossing can be made in one fluid movement rather than in three stages. So that best accommodates a future bike path or cycle track on that side of the roadway. Drawbacks here, we are actually widening the pedestrian crossing or the crossing distance on the west and south legs with this alternative since we're adding a right turn lane. So what that does, in addition to increasing the distance, it increases the time it takes a pedestrian to cross, and it also increases the number of lanes they have to cross. So, some drawbacks with that, we still do have channelized right-turn lanes on the northern half of the intersection for those who don't like that design. And then the final drawback here is the traditional right-turn lane doesn't have quite as much capacity as a channelized right-turn lane, so we may see some longer queues on those approaches during the, the peak hours. There is a fourth alternative, which would be a do-nothing or no-build alternative, where we would leave the intersection as it is today, but remove that pedestrian bridge from the district plan. So next steps with our study, we'll continue to refine our alternatives. We're working with staff to determine how these alternatives could work with a planned cycle track or bike path. We'll develop cost estimates for all our alternatives to give staff a good idea of what these improvements might cost. We'll also look at short-term improvements, low-cost, high-impact things that can be done in the interim, like signing, striping, things like that. And then finally, we'll wrap it up with a big study report to summarize what we looked at. So, Jeremy and staff can, can talk about this further, but removing that pedestrian bridge from the district plan would require an amendment to the district plan. I'm, I've been asked to let you know that a full review of that plan is anticipated soon, which could lead to an update and necessitate in-depth community engagement with that update. That is all I had for you all. I'm happy to take questions, otherwise we'd love to get feedback on our alternatives.
Thank you. Council, thoughts on this? Councilmember Moe, and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, if we choose to do nothing, can we still keep the pedestrian bridge option available, or we have confirmed the pedestrian bridge is not feasible in the area?
Mayor and council, what we've done is, it's been a very high-level look at the pedestrian bridge. It's certainly feasible, there are challenges, but it's, we're not saying it can't be done. We're just looking at lower-cost alternatives to that.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I, I drive this road every week to go to work, and I have for the last seven years, because I used to work in the 8500 building, now I work in St. Louis Park, so I'm up and down that road all the time. And I see how crazy drivers get going through this intersection and how busy, you're absolutely right, this is the busiest intersection we have in town. People are coming down 100, still going 60, 65 miles an hour, and they blow right through these intersections. And then people, those power right turns, that's the accurate term for it, because they're powering through. And even with our city ordinance to drop the speed limit down to 25, 84th consistently, you see people going 35, 40 miles an hour down that neighborhood road. And I am extremely thankful that we haven't had any pedestrian accidents or deaths in the last 10 years. And for me, every time I come through that intersection, I see people from the offices trying to cross to go to the Holiday, or there's a few restaurants in the strip mall right next door. I have seen a significant number of kids riding around on their bikes and with fishing poles because they're fishing and moving around Normandale. And to me, as a father, $5 million is worth every single penny if that means that we don't have an accident and no kid dies, and that we have to call their parents and say, we didn't want to spend $5 million on this pedestrian bridge, and now your child is dead. And so, I appreciate the, the options and the thought to reduce costs, but when it comes to this intersection in particular, I still would prefer to see a dedicated pedestrian bridge that isolates pedestrians from traffic, that allows that safe crossing, so that we don't ever have to come back to council and say, the decisions we made a few years ago led to someone dying because this intersection is the wild, wild west. Thanks.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I drive through this intersection a lot, but I'm also a pedestrian there, at least every other day, because I'm a runner and so, and it's my running route. So totally understand that it is not a pleasant experience going through that intersection. So, something that wasn't talked about in your presentation was the underpass that goes under Normandale, and that's usually what I use, except for the last time I was over there because it was flooded and then I had to use the intersection. And so, I guess as I kind of think about it, as much as I would love a bridge, we do have a lot of pretty significant infrastructure costs on the horizon. And so, in terms of prioritization, I wouldn't see that as super-high priority because we haven't seen, like the data isn't showing us that we're seeing the accidents or the pedestrian ish, like incidents with pedestrians or anything like that. If we, if it was super-dangerous, if we were seeing that in the data, then I would be much more concerned. But if, I, in the packet, I really liked the additional considerations for channelized right-turn lanes, like the elevating the pedestrian walk and making it more obvious, like things like that. So I would say, everything that we could do, I kind of lean toward alternative three to make it safer and just more pedestrian-friendly, I think we should do that. I also think we need better wayfinding signs so that people know that that underpass is an option. And then the underpass itself, like some of it's starting to crumble into the river, so if, you know, we could have some fixes there. I think it'd be beautiful to have a mural under there because right now, kids are going down there and spray painting over and over again, somebody goes and paints it white and then they spray paint again. Somebody goes and paints it white and then they spray paint again. So I think that there's just a lot of opportunity to make that a much more pleasant experience. And then when it is flooding, people have the alternative to use the crosswalk, obviously the intersection. So yeah, and then I guess my concerns with, I think it's, I think it was alternative one. I mean, traffic has increased substantially on our city roads with the 494 construction, especially those east to west routes. And so any significant changes that could potentially cause more backups, I think we should probably wait until after the 494 construction is done. I mean, I live off 90th, and there are days I like, it takes me five minutes just to take a right turn onto 90th. Like, it's really, really hard right now. And so I would just, I would give some caution there. So any kind of changes that might impact traffic, hesitate there, but those are my comments.
Thank you, councilmember Carter. Councilmember Alessandro.
Absolutely, I came here to say something very similar, Mr. Mayor, to what councilmember Carter just said, which is that I feel, I feel like, no disrespect to the data that's been gathered so far, but I feel like it's all probably, like, it's muddled up with the ridiculousness of traffic in this area. I mean, I was sitting on Stanley Avenue with a resident because he's mad about Stanley Avenue traffic. So I was like, okay, I'll sit with you for an hour and we'll count cars, and it was nuts. But I walked up to the intersection of Stanley Avenue and 84th Street to ask the people in their cars, where are they coming from and where are they going? And every single one of them was coming off 90th, making a left, going east, going west, taking the nifty little road that is nine, Nine Mile Creek Parkway, which is no speed limit, it seems, and then coming down Stanley Avenue, three or four blocks to make a left turn to get on 100, as opposed to just taking 90th to Normandale and going down to 100, which I can't for the life of me not understand why that's not faster. But whatever, people aren't rational. So they do, they do what they feel like they need to in order to feel like they're continuing to move. So my point being that like, kudos to the folks in engineering who have figured out how this intersection can work to the point where nothing bad has happened to it. So kudos to you all, absolutely. Like, I think that's a incredibly, like, for the amount of traffic and the amount of safe it is, it's incredible. So great job, absolutely. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily want to make major decisions at that intersection without knowing what its normal traffic patterns are. And maybe, maybe the data you're giving us is normal, and what we've been seeing over the last year is abnormal, and so we can discount that. And if that's true, then that's great. But I'd be careful about looking at what's happened over the last year and saying, oh, that's the pattern that we need to model our decisions based on. All that having been said, I actually really liked option one, but I actually liked a combination of option one and option two, which you, you didn't ask for, but I'm going to make mention of, the, the idea that, that with, with option one, only solving for one half, can you do what you want to do in option two for the other half? Is like, so is, can option one look like what you're planning on, on the east, on the east side of that intersection as I'm looking north? And then can you, can you do the changes to the channelization on the west and southbound side? I guess I'm doing that right? Yeah. Going, yeah, going west from the north and going south from the east, right? Am I saying that, from the west, yeah. I don't know if that's an option at all, but it seems like that you're taking a combination of really interesting data, right? You're, you're, you're solving quickly for the area of most crossing, which is the most, the one we'd want to be most safe, right? The people that, the, the way that people use it most, the one we do the most protections on. And then the other ones, though, you get some protection from that. So I throw that out there as an, an option. The other thought I had was, can you do a, there were a couple of places where you said, we're not sure that we would or wouldn't back up traffic? So can you study that? Like, I don't know if we do this at all, but you could close one of the two turn lanes randomly with a bunch of cones and just see what happens on a given day about traffic backup, right? You could do that. Similarly, with you making that right turn in option three, you're talking about that right turn potentially backing things up. You could just close the channel and make them make a right turn for a couple of days and figure it out. I'm just wondering if those things are in the plan, or if you have thought about those as ideas on how to actually get some data. Knowing that I just said, don't do it now, because I'm, I'm not, I'm not helping you by saying, don't do it now, because it might not be accurate. But I'm just wondering if you can do those things. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Alessandro. We can certainly combine alternatives one and two into one alternative moving forward. We have gotten that feedback in the past too, to combine one and two or one and three. So that, that is a good point there. Regarding the traffic volumes that, that were collected and modeled, I believe those were before the 494 project started. I don't know, Mike, if you have any, any other inputs on modeling the, the median, widening the median and getting, getting rid of a left turn lane? I believe you modeled that in the traffic software.
Right, yeah, we, we looked at removal of those left turn lanes on all four approaches, separately and concurrently. And the left turn on the north leg and the west leg, those left turns are very heavy, such that removal of one would just not function at all. So that leaves us with those other two that are left with alternative one. And then to your comment about it may back up or it may back up, we test all these in a traffic model, it's just like a weather model, it's our best guess based off of the data we have and the methodology. So our best guess tells us that it may be an issue periodically during one or two hours of the day. Could we test it out? Certainly. Would the public like us to test it out? Maybe, maybe not. But that's usually not something we include in our testing of alternatives, but could be worth looking into.
Okay, I thank, thanks for that. Yeah, I, I can tell you that, at least I, from my experience in Bloomington, I think they'd want us to test it before we spent $5 million on it. You know, so if we can do that, I think if we, you know, if there's some creative way to do it, maybe we should try to do that to just see, but you all are the experts on that front. Yeah, I think, I think these are all great. I, but I would agree, I mean, it'll be very interesting to see the 494 bridge project that we just dealt with, where they put the pedestrian bridge over by Nicolet Mall, right, or Nicolet, over 494. You know, I don't know about you guys, but if you've ever been down at Loring Park, good example is this past weekend when it was really, really busy, that pedestrian bridge from the Sculpture Garden over to Loring Park and back, it's used not by half people, half the people that are actually attempting to cross there. And so I think you're, I mean, I think, I appreciate the idea of a pedestrian bridge, I really, really do. But if we're going to have to put it, you know, a quarter of the way down the street and we're gonna, people aren't going to use it, they're just not going to use it. And we know this because we can see in the dirt how people take corners and everything else, because, you know, sidewalks can be perpendicular, but people aren't. And so I, I just, if we can spend that $5 million doing something that's truly going to be more safety oriented and give people this, the line of sight that they're looking for to get to and from places, I think that'd be better. I, I appreciate the consideration of bike lanes, though, and I think we should look at that seriously. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivas and councilmember Nelson, councilmember Rivas.
I'll ask a simple question, I'll leave him the complicated one, okay? Now, have you, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that you consider closing all right, all four right turns at one point, right?
Yes.
Why wasn't any proposal on regards to all the closure, not closure, but reducing the speed on all four of them or make the two, the one coming from the north, turning right onto the west, and the one coming from the east, turning north onto 100, right? So why you don't have any proposals with those two slowing down as the other two?
Right, great question. Um, yeah, so the southbound right turn and the eastbound right turn, so on and off of 100 basically, right? Yes, westbound right. Yeah, those two right turns are also similar to the left turns, very heavy movements, such that a traditional right turn lane wouldn't be able to push that much traffic through, that we'd have queues farther back onto 100 or to the east on 84th. So it, it, the delays associated that, with that would be not acceptable, I guess. And we know that when drivers are delayed, they become more aggressive and safety gets bad.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think what councilmember Rivas was asking is, why isn't there a roundabout there? I was, I guess, that's, that's just my way of saying. But my, my question is, we have a pavement management program, when would work be done in this area based on that approximately? Obviously, it's not to the year, but.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Nelson, we don't have a specific year yet for this project. These, these are just long-term improvements that we, we plan to put into our CIP at some point. I believe the pedestrian bridge was planned in 2032, so it would be maybe around that timeframe, but we don't have a specific timeframe yet.
Okay. And then, am I correct in remembering that this section of Normandale is county road? And what would their role be in terms of planning as well as funding for it?
In terms of planning, they would have to review all of the design plans and layouts for these improvements. In terms of funding, I do not know that question, so I might pass that off to Julie Long, our city engineer.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Nelson, we would have to request to get included in Hennepin County's CIP program. And so like Jeremy mentioned, the PED bridge is out for 2032, so Hennepin County isn't taking requests out that far yet, so we would have to do that in the future.
Okay. What about the changes at the intersection, not the PED bridge? That is, same situation?
Same situation.
Yeah, thank you. Then I'll just make a quick comment. Based on the safety data and things like that, I mean, I, I agree with the concerns that have been raised, but I think there are other intersections that, if we look at the data, have actual more safety concerns. And, you know, if we're going to spend $5 million somewhere, which we are, we're going to spend it somewhere, let's spend it in the area that we get the most impact. And, you know, I'm not going to tell you where that is, but if this one has had no pedestrian injuries, the crash rates are relatively low, then I, I think frankly, I think we should focus where there are crashes and injuries and things like that. I mean, I know not too far from me on, on France and 102nd, there have been a couple of fatalities and, and things like that. So, you know, we, I just, let's focus our scarce resources in the most high-impact areas where they need to be done. And I think that it seems to be working. I would, I don't remember which option it was, but I would take, I would do the no option with the removal of the PED bridge and focus those resources elsewhere in the city where we're, we're actually having crashes and, and pedestrian and bike accidents.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll just wrap thing up, things up here by saying, so you can see by the, the number of lanes and by how close the channelized right turn lanes are to Holiday and to the 8,000, you, you can tell this was kind of retrofitted. This was, the, the road was one width, and then as development happened and then increased pedestrian, or increased traffic happened, it just kind of worked toward making it all work. And if the goal was to make traffic get through there faster, I mean, mission accomplished, because you can, you can drive at freeway speed on, on 35, on, on Normandale Boulevard and have people right behind you. And so it, it's worked in what it was set out to accomplish. My thought would be, what can we do to undo some of that? And I'd, I'd leave that up to the, to the folks who know best, but there, I get it, we'd be slowing people down, heaven forbid, but we'd be slowing people down, but to, to make it safer, not only from a pedestrian standpoint, but from the bicycle standpoint, but just from a traffic standpoint, it can get a little hairy in there. And just to make it a more drivable area, 84th is, is a city street. It's not a, it's not the big county road really, or like Normandale is. And so the work that we can do, I think, to, to take away some of that, some of the incentives to drive just as fast as you possibly can on that road, the better. All right? Very good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, I'm going to call item 5.3 now, our city council involvement on boards and commissions. Emily Larson is going to come up here and present that, but I'm going to point out that it is now 8:34. We still have this, we have council issues and updates, and then we have a closed session. So it's looking very likely we're going to move, go past nine o'clock. I think it's up to all of us to decide how much past nine o'clock we go. So just something to keep in mind as we, as we work our way through this discussion here. So, good evening, Ms. Larson, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good to be with you this evening. So I'm here to provide an update on council involvement on boards.
Can I interrupt for just one second?
Yes.
I apologize, I should have done this earlier when you asked for the agenda items, but I know that we have a council member that's very interested in this item, that isn't able to be here tonight, actually not feeling well. And I'm just wondering if it might make sense to, to either delay this or delay action on this, or, how would you prefer that we do that? Because I know he's, has, has thought, he's emailed, he's engaged on it, and I apologize because I should have brought this up on the agenda when it was asked about, instead of getting to this point and keeping.
A couple of thoughts, and I appreciate that. This is not a decision item, this is a, this is a discussion, this is for us to give feedback and provide direction to staff for next steps. And I know that councilmember Lohman has submitted copious information regarding this and his opinion on this with questions and so on. So I think his input has been, has been received, and I think it can all be in part of the, the total mix as we move forward on this. But I'd like to keep going on this if, if, if you're cool with that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so again, I'm here to provide an update on city council involvement on boards and commissions, and the work that we've done over the past few months to gather feedback regarding this topic. So we can go to the next slide, or am I advancing here? Looks like it's me. Great. All right, so I'm going to review some background information as a reminder for the group here tonight, provide an overview on the stakeholder engagement that was conducted over the last few months, and then share the recommendation that was developed based on that input. And then we'll have time for questions and discussions from the group. So this topic first emerged at the meeting on January 6th of this year, and council directed staff to provide options and recommendations for a consistent process regarding guidelines for council involvement on boards and commissions. Within the scope of the conversation, our focus is on the commissions established in City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, and specifically those in bold. So I refer to these groups as the Big Five, and they are the Advisory Board of Health, the Creative Placemaking Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the Park Commission, and the Sustainability Commission. In exploring this topic, we considered four different scenarios. So first, looking at the left, thinking of having no representative from the council serving on these boards or commissions, and then moving all the way over to the right where the recommendation may be having a representative, which would involve a significant time commitment. So we explored all options in between no representative, no representative over to representative in the engagement that we conducted. The two different forms of feedback that were offered were first leveraging the annual experience survey that's conducted every year for members, involving custom questions and then our standard questions. And that survey is provided to all active members of commissions, and then also focused conversations with the five boards in question, and also the staff who provide support to those boards. So at a high level, the annual experience survey, here's a summary of a few data points for you. We had 32% of active members complete the survey, so 27 individuals representing nine of the 11 commissions. Of those responses, 85% are satisfied with their experience, 74% agree that the city values their contribution on the commission, and then 93% are likely or very likely to recommend serving to others. And these numbers are similar to what we heard in the survey that was done in 2023, 2024. So you'll see there's a high level of satisfaction with the experience of our current members. We did add six custom questions to the survey to guide our discussion tonight, so focusing on council involvement. And in the question that asked about the current level of engagement with council, 58% of respondents indicated that they didn't feel that they didn't feel like they had enough engagement with council to feel like it was really enough. We also asked them to rank options for council involvement, and we specified what those options were. And this is how the ranking emerged. So regular touchpoints and updates was the number one item. Uh, having a council liaison came in at number two, and then a council representative came in at number three. To illustrate, there's a few comments here about why the rankings emerged the way that they did. Um, so touchpoints was something that the group was excited about, or an individual was excited about, I should say. Um, one individual expressed that a liaison would be great, but recognizing that would be a big ask of time, um, for members of the council. And so, um, there's also some reference to power dynamics and a desire for a more continued line of communication between commissions and council. So getting further into the short answer responses of our custom questions. We asked what kind of connection would feel most valuable? And there were three themes that emerged from those responses. The first was focusing on specific asks for input and feedback from commissions, so council to commissions. Um, the second was having a more clear and intentional connection between commission work plans and the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan. And then third, um, having more guidance from city council on what commissions can actually act upon. We also asked how more meaningful connection might impact the experience of serving on a commission. And saw three additional themes emerge. Um, so understanding that more connection would help commissioners feel like their voices were heard and valued. Um, would help commissioners feel like they had a stronger connection to city governance as a whole, as opposed to the silos that they may live within. And then feeling confident that an impact has been made through their work and their contribution. So beyond the survey, we also had a focused conversation with each of the five boards led by staff liaisons, and we asked the same questions of each group. And through those conversations, there were three recommendations that emerged from members. So first is asking for clarity of expectations and specific requests from commissions. So that might feel repetitive, right, from some of what we heard in the survey. Um, also asking for more attendance and engagement in regular meetings, whether it's coming to a regularly scheduled commission meeting or leveraging other events like the Board and Commission Connect events that we've hosted in the past. And then creating a more consistent feedback loop with commissions. So that if commissions are providing recommendations or advising the council on a certain topic, there's a greater understanding of how that feedback was used and what decisions were made as a result. So in addition to members, we also had a discussion with staff, so staff liaisons and secretaries. And we saw three key themes emerge from those conversations. Um, the first is that commissions desire more clear and specific direction on initiatives. Again, that may feel repetitive from the feedback we've heard. There was also a point about conversation rather than formal council meetings. So you hear from each of these groups once a year about their work plans. Um, and thinking that a more conversational or dialogue-based opportunity would increase understanding and alignment for commission members. And then third, recognizing that sometimes council representatives, um, or hypothetically, because most of these groups don't have them. Um, it could result in an unintended power imbalance with having resident, uh, members appointed and then the council role being what it is. So with all of that information, the recommendation that has emerged in thinking about the four scenarios that were explored is to move forward with regular touchpoints and updates. And specifically thinking of more structured and consistent touchpoints and updates, um, to have meaningful opportunities throughout the year. So there's four key areas that relate to this recommendation, um, and I'll go ahead and cover each of them individually. So first, within these updates would be to clarify roles, expectation, and shared purpose for commissions and council. And this is important because commissioners have a desire to know that they're contributing more effectively. So I mentioned silos earlier, right? Not just thinking within their own work plan, but making sure they're aligning with your strategic direction for the city in the work that they do. Um, what might this look like? So we could see better alignment with council priorities and commission work plans, whether that's through guidance and feedback or through the work plan development process. Um, also if there's a ask of commissions to council, or council to commissions. Um, being very specific about what type of input would be of value to you all on the council and what that might look like. And then thinking about policymaking, which is a core function of the council. So clarity on how commissions can be involved in the policy side of things. Establishing consistent two-way communication and feedback loops is another key area. And this is important because we heard a lot about having reliable and responsive communication from you all on the council to the commissions. So what this might look like could be clear and timely direction on council priorities. So thinking about how you conduct your business and, um, identify your strategies, having those go directly to commissions in a timely way. You might see that in memo or reporting templates that are established, uh, regular opportunities for dialogue. Um, and that word dialogue, I think, is really important in having more space to have conversations with you all is something that we heard frequently. So that could be through joint meetings, listening sessions, or other opportunities as well. And then focusing on having a feedback loop so that there's clarity on what was being considered from the commission side of things that led to decisions that you were making as a body. Having purposeful opportunities for relationship building is the third key area. Um, really recognizing that commissioners value relationships with each other, with the staff that they speak very highly of, but also with you all as commission members. Um, and helping increase the visibility of the work that they do on their individual groups. So again, this could involve leveraging existing meetings. So we have hosted biannual Commission Connect events in the past. And perhaps we consider strengthening the structure or the agenda of those meetings and also clarifying the expectation of attendance for both commission bodies and the council. Um, considering incorporating city council introductions with onboarding so that all new members have a touchpoint with you right when they're starting their service. Um, considering establishing annual meetings, uh, between, let's say, the city council chairs and vice chairs. So thinking about connecting strategic direction of all of those groups. And then potentially exploring opportunities for informal interactions. So maybe that's meet and greets, community events, volunteer, um, event, shared tabling opportunities, those sorts of things. Uh, but ultimately, we did hear from, from commission members a recognition that they recommend, they recommend avoiding creating additional time commitments for everybody involved. Um, and I know that's a shared interest from both groups. And then the fourth, I don't have a slide on this, but there are two commissions within the five that do have City Code implications. If we were to change our approach to regular touchpoints and updates. And so part of that recommendation is to update City Code to sunset those seats that currently exist within what code has established. So with that, I will open the floor for questions and discussion.
Thank you. And thanks for the work pulling this all together. I know it wasn't, it was, it was a big task. Looks like you talked to a lot of folks and got some good feedback. Well done. Thank you. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I just have to say, when this was initially brought up in January, I was like, oh, why, why are we gonna spend time doing this? Um, but the, I mean, I thought it was good, but I was like, why don't we just make some decisions? But, um, I really think it was, um, great to go through this process. And I appreciate how you designed the process, both in terms of having the survey and the focus groups. And, um, and really thoughtfully and thoroughly engaging those who are involved. Um, and overall, I would say I'm very supportive of the recommendations moving forward. Um, I think kind of my, one of my key takeaways is that everybody just really wants to be doing high-impact, effective work, right? And, um, and they want to be in strategic alignment with what the city council is doing. And I know I had had conversations with some former and current board members of boards and commissions who were feeling like they could be more effective, right? They could be doing more impactful work. And so I think that this, um, these recommendations really are gonna provide us with the opportunity to do that moving forward. And, um, something that I really do like is just, you know, not wanting to add a bunch of additional meetings. And so, um, one of the things that I really liked that was brought up was just maybe even doing some kind of retreat that is the city council and then the board chairs and vice chairs and the staff liaisons. So we can get super clear on what are the strategic priorities. So maybe it could happen in the fall for the following years. And then they could have really meaningful work plans that align with, uh, the priorities of the council. And then it could also help us get really clear on what our priorities are, um, for the following year. So, um, yeah, I'm excited about this. Thank you.
Councilmember Mu.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think I've been talking about this since we, I first came in council. It was like the relationship we have with our boards and commissions just isn't where I would expect us to be when we're asking them to take on work on our behalf, so we don't have to spend even more time here. And so I'm excited about where this is leading in the conversations that we're having. Cause I do believe, like Councilmember Carter says, that our boards and commission members have a huge opportunity to contribute even more than what we, we've asked them to do. Um, and that they want to do that. Um, I love an idea of a QBR, quarterly business review. My team at work is about to get ready to do one now, that Q2 is done. But I think that is an idea that would allow us to get more exposure to the work that they're doing. Um, and allow them to be in front of us and create that, that connection. But my broader question, um, and I don't need a, a answer, but something I'm asking for the, the whole council to consider is, are we at an inflection point where we need to have more time? My wife and my kids will not say no to getting more time with me. But when I look at our boards, commissions, the work plans that we have, the, um, the goals that we're trying to achieve, like, do we need to have more time from our board and commission members and from council to get this work done? Um, because our city has grown, right? If we look at the map of, uh, a graph of our, our population, right? We stagnated in the eighties and nineties, stayed at that 85,000 population range. And over the last five years, we've increased into the nineties now, right? Our projections are gonna be in the, the 100,000 in the next five, 10 years here. Like, are we getting to a size where this just necessitates us having to be more committed and giving more time? Um, to support these boards and commissions so that we can unlock and grow as the city grows? And so that's a question I, I played, put out there for the council. Um, as much as I would like to have more time back for home life and for my work life. Uh, are we there where we need to have more focus and, and time contributing to the city to continue to grow? So just a question putting out there for everyone to consider, uh, as much as we'd like to cut back on meetings. Thanks.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yeah, thank you very much for pulling this together. Um, I had a quick question for you. I'm curious. Did you, um, did you, did, did you have any opportunity to talk to former members of committees?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, we did not talk to past members.
Okay, I'm just, there's always an interesting question about like, was that part of the reason they rolled off? Cause they didn't feel engagement and they didn't know that they were making an impact and whatever, and would we wanna solve for that? So it just was something to think about. I don't know if as part of ongoing thoughts as people exit, um, their board, commission opportunities. Maybe we can get that feedback such that we can keep track of that over, over time. Um, okay, um, yeah, I, I think this is great. I, I, um, I know that when, when, when we have had a, a commission actively ask for council presence at a particular meeting or whatever, I've always prioritized getting there if I could. Because I think if they're making that call out, there's something important that they want to talk to council members about. Um, uh, because they need guidance or they wanna make a case for something or whatever. And I, I, so I think the idea that, that they have the opportunity to ask us and ask all of us, not just their liaison, for example, or somebody who might sit there. Um, to, to say, please come, all of you, we want your input on this. You know, all their meetings are public anyway, so if four of us show up, it's not a violation of public meeting law or anything like that. And so, um, I, I think, I think this is gonna be a great way to do it. Um, um, I hope that it does yield the kinds of additional engagement that we want. And I think it gives us a focused opportunity for us to, to share with them, um, what we're thinking. Um, when, you know, or what we were thinking about when we approved their work plan in the, in the first place. Thanks.
Others? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just very quickly, um, in terms of the recommendations, um, when will we see the specifics on those? There's the clarity of the purpose and the roles and all that. Cause I think that, that's very important in terms of some of the questions that got raised that led to this conversation. And I think the reality is, is many of our commissions operate very differently. And there are very different expectations from them. And so just making sure we're all on the same page about those things, I think would be helpful. In terms of the touchpoints, I think that's absolutely the right way to go. And, um, having some type of regular reporting, um, and integrating them into discussions when relevant. Uh, you know, like we have a couple of times with our, uh, Parks Chair when we talk about the Health and Wellness Center and things like that, so that we can, you know, actually have someone from one of those commissions along with staff, uh, when appropriate. So I, I think this is going a really good direction. I think, uh, answering a lot of the questions that have been raised in terms of, um, how these operate, how we interact, how we, um, engage them, uh, even more beneficially for the community.
Great, and Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I did hear a question, um, in your comments. And, um, ultimately, what would happen from here is the Community Outreach and Engagement Division does provide that high-level coordination of commissions. And so we'd work in partnership with the city manager, um, interim city managers and, uh, staff liaisons to move some of these things forward. So you can see them in action and then, um, make sure that there's conversations with you all to see what's working, what's not, as we try some of these things moving forward. So it would be something supported by staff, um, from my team and then also with the staff liaisons working together.
I, I appreciate the recommendations put forward, and I agree completely on the touchpoints. I agree on the, um, clarifying the roles and expectations. But I would also think, uh, and I know you have, to think about ways to change the structure of it as well. Just the overall structure to make this more attainable. For example, what if they, what if all our boards and commissions met on the same night of the week all the time? And that way, if they wanted a touchpoint with the, the, the city council, it could be, you know, a, a drop-in. It could be a meal beforehand, it could be any number of different things where we could actually have that touchpoint and do that kind of thing. Or a structure in terms of, um, the, the, the two-way communication. Um, face-to-face is always best and be able to sit down and talk, but sometimes there are other ways to do that as well. And how could we explore different ways to do that? Uh, and again, I'm not, I know I'm not saying anything you haven't already thought of about four or five times. Uh, and in addition to even what I'm talking about. But, uh, let's think about the structure of it as well, in addition to go with these goals and these, uh, these ideas, which I think are all great, but different ways to make it happen as well. Councilmember Nelson?
Super, super quick, just your fourth, uh, recommendation, uh, to remove sunset the city council representatives. When will that come back?
I think it, it depends on when this whole thing would come back to us, which would be, any idea when?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the exact timeline has not been discussed. And with code amendments, we would partner with the team at Legal, um, to move those things forward. If, if it appears that that's what's being supported by the group.
Bottom line is TBD on the, on the next.
TBD, but that will come back for a discussion and, okay, would that be public?
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm sure it'd be part of public. Councilmember Rebus.
Just a quick comment. Uh, I would like to add some other questions that Councilmember Lohman sent to all of us to consider. Uh, if you don't, if you don't think that is the right way to go, but I think we should revisit this particular thing. I have him participate in this, cause I agree with a lot of the comments that he sent to all of us.
Well, and, and as I said, this isn't the, the final decision. We're just asking, we're providing input to staff, and that's part of the input to staff for Councilmember Lohman's.
Taking that into, into notice, I, I, you know, at, at this point, I don't support any of this stuff until we're all expressed. I have a lot of questions myself that I will not ask today because I'm in total support of what, uh, Councilmember Lohman has also. Uh, you know, um, I mean, I wanna ask other questions also, but I'll wait until we discuss it again then. Cause I do, uh, agree with a lot of his, uh, questions and comments that he made in his email. So we'll, I'll wait until the next time.
Yeah, they, they will be part of the minutes. Uh, his questions and comments will be part of the minutes of, of the meeting. And, uh, they'll be part of the overall evaluation of this as staff whenever we bring it forward next to, to actually act on this. This was a study session, so do, when we act on this, there will be a, a formal discussion by the, the council, including all of that information. Uh, yes, I don't. Yes, I don't see why not. So council, is there anything else? Very good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Council, we are 50 seconds ahead of our required adjournment time. I'm going to make a motion that we extend our adjournment time to 9:30, 9:45. What do we think here? How long will a closed session take? We heard from the expert. 9:30 is is the the goal. We will, I will move that we can, we will extend our adjournment time until no later than 9:30.
Second.
Motion in a second to extend our adjournment time to no later than 9:30 this evening. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. Well, then we'd best get to it, folks. Next up is our city council policy and issue update. And I will kick us off very quickly here, recapping our city council listening session. We had four speakers this evening. We had Mr. Paul Royer from St. Paul Lutheran Church. They're in a situation where at St. Steve, excuse me, St. Stephen Lutheran Church, they're in a situation at St. Stephen where they, for more than two decades, they rented out space to a lawn care company in exchange for the space. They got snow removal, they got lawn care, saved a number of a good chunk of money for the the church. And it turns out that it's opposed, it's against city code. And so Paul Royer asked if there was any solutions or any suggestions we might have. I told them we would take a look into it and see what there was without promising any possible solutions, but we would definitely take a look into it. Similarly, Mr. Brian Askey had questions about storage trailers and RV issues. And he was, he was asking the differences between a a storage trailer like he has and the larger RVs that are even larger and more obvious parked alongside or in front of a house and what the differences are and if there's ways that we could work through some of those differences and make those a little bit more consistent. Again, told told Mr. Askey that we would take a look at it, not guaranteeing anything, but at least we'd have staff dig into it and provide an answer to him. Ally Jarvis asked the city council to consider a a couple of legislative approvals, one to ban live dog and cat sales in stores in Bloomington, and second, an ordinance banning circuses using live animals in the city of Bloomington. Currently, neither of those things happen. Her point is she would like to see an ordinance to get ahead of some of those issues and make sure that they don't happen in the city of Bloomington. And finally, Steve Furlong stopped by to share site plans and illustrations and a narrative about his new infield residential development project named the James Avenue City Homes. He just wanted to present that to us and to have opened the conversation. And we did just that. And so I look forward to hearing more from Mr. Furlong about that. That is what we had for our city council listening session. Once again, I think four new folks talking to us. So mission accomplished in terms of opening it up and making sure that more people have a voice in front of their city council. The two other things, actually, the three other things that I want to bring forward, I just want to, I want to thank the folks both on the the city staff on in our community, the folks who attended our two celebrations this past weekend, both Pride and and Juneteenth, despite the ungodly heat. I appreciate that everybody turned out, appreciated all the community members that turned out and the volunteers that helped this happen, the volunteers and the sponsors who helped these events happen. It just couldn't happen without them. And it, I I hope everybody had a chance to enjoy them because Bloomington events and celebrations are for everybody. And I hope everyone took that to heart and had a chance to enjoy that and get to one of those two celebrations here in Bloomington. And the other thing that I will just mention, I was in, well, I wasn't at either of those celebrations last weekend because I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors Annual Meeting down in Tampa. Very interesting discussion with about 200 mayors from across the country, talked about a lot of different things, a lot of it relevant to Bloomington and to the Twin Cities in general. It's always an opportunity, one of the, actually, one of the key goals that we state for this conference of mayors is to steal as many ideas as possible. And I was able to do a presentation about the economic development work we've got going on here in Bloomington and highlighted Hatch Bloomington and got about five or six different people got in my ear afterward, asking how we did it, how we funded it, how it was all put together. So it's a good example of not only Bloomington stealing ideas, which we did to get Hatch Bloomington in the first place, but then to extend that forward and to provide people with the other options and opportunities. All in all, a good meeting and a worthwhile time, I think, even though Bloomington is one of the smaller cities that's involved in the U.S. Conference of Mayors, there's always good information and good things to bring home from it. So that is mine. And I will turn to Ms. Hedin and see what she has to offer.
Yes, Mayor and council members and staff and community, the city of Bloomington is proud to be named one of Minnesota's top workplaces for 2025. We ranked number 45 among large employers. It's based entirely on employee feedback and it's an award from the Minnesota Star Tribune, and it highlights the city's strong culture, engagement, and commitment to the supportive and inclusive workplace that we have. So congratulations to everyone.
With a round of applause, absolutely. Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any questions on either, on my, anything I said or anything Ms. Hedin said? All right, council, do you have anything to bring forward as part of council, council policy and issues update? Yep. Well, if we don't have anything, I will just make one final plug for Thursday of this week is our annual SummerFet celebration over at Normandale Lake. Once again, I think I counted close to 30 food trucks. There's kids area, live music starting at 5:00, music as the sun goes down, and then the best fireworks in the Twin Cities after dark. And so encourage everybody to join us there. We'd love to see you there. It's always a great time. The weather is supposed to be iffy as you get closer to Friday and Saturday. So if you want to see good fireworks, you might want to come out on Thursday night when we do SummerFet and see the good fireworks. So Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your comment about SummerFet reminded me of one I had in the back of my head. We, I probably said this last year, I maybe I'll say it again this year, I'd love for the Parks and Rec Department at some point, if we could get on their work plan, to look into non-loud fireworks. They exist in nature. They're really easy to get. They're more expensive potentially, but I'd love for that to be a case. We hear every year from veterans who have PTSD, other folks who have PTSD, and folks who have animals, that it is a very, very difficult time for them in our community. And since they exist, I think it's not harmful to turn a beautiful fireworks display into something that you can actually hear the music around, which would be amazing since we ask our folks to play that anyway. So I'll make, I don't know, I feel like it's becoming an annual pitch for that, but I'd love for us to finally get that on the workbook if we could. Thanks.
Appreciate that, council member. Counsel, is there anything else on item 5.4, our city council policy and issues update? If not, we will move on to item 5.5, which is a closed session regarding property acquisition for the Salt Storage Building. State law allows city councils to close public meetings for a limited number of reasons, including property acquisition, negotiations, or conversations. And so we will be doing that at this time. What we will do, we will go into closed session and we will then come back into open session to officially close the meeting that we will, we will do. And at that point, we'll report back about item 5.5. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution directing the closure of a public meeting of the city council. Motion by Councilmember Mu, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adopt the resolution directing the closure of a public meeting of the city council. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. We are in closed session. We will come back out to close the meeting. We will come back out to close the meeting. And with that, we are back in open session of the Bloomington City Council. Finished the work of our closed session and council, I would move that we direct staff to take actions consistent with the decisions and conversation made in our closed session.
Sayon.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Muah to direct staff to take actions consistent with the discussion that was had during the closed session. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to one with Councilmember Rebus in opposition. Council, that completes our business for this evening. And now I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Dallosandro to adjourn tonight's meeting. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you much for your work tonight, council. Good job. Thank you to staff for leading us through this and thanks to the members of the public who are watching and participating. Everybody have a great rest of the week and we'll see you at Summerfet.